Good morning. I will call this meeting to order. Oh, I don't know who's giving the pledge.
I think it's Chris Rice. So it's up to you.
Oh, Danny, would you do it? All right.
Plenaritarians, take the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have public comment for matters that are not on the agenda. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment. We'll move to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move for acceptance of the tentative agenda as presented.
It's been moved by Commissioner Gardner, seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. With that, we will turn to our administrative agenda, the one item we have for possible action, discussion to provide staff direction in the preparation of the fiscal year 2025-26 budgets for all Douglas County and Douglas County Redevelopment Agency funds. Discussion may include a general overview of the Douglas County budget and presentations by staff, including but not limited to presentations on the following: general fund, all departments including supplemental requests, special revenue funds including supplemental requests, debt service funds, enterprise funds including supplemental requests, internal service funds including supplemental requests, capital project funds including supplemental requests, redevelopment agency funds, and capital improvement projects. We have with us Chief Operating Officer Kathy Lewis.
Thank you, and welcome to our second day of our budget hearings. I have the schedule up on the screen. Today, we'll hear first thing from our district attorney, and then the clerk treasurer, then we have scheduled lunch break, and then Public Works afterwards, which is Rhodes. I think they're doing Rhodes Building and Motor Pool this afternoon for that. So with that, I will get the presentation ready for our district attorney.
Welcome, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you. Good morning, for the record, Mark Jackson, Douglas County District Attorney. I do prefer to stand when I present. I'm so used to doing it when I'm in court, so I asked our COO, Kathy Lewis, if she would drive the PowerPoint presentation.
Almost there.
So it truly is a pleasure to be able to have an opportunity to present not only to the board, to members of the public that do show up for these hearings, as well as anyone else that may be viewing this on YouTube. The mission statement is about upholding the public trust in the application and enforcement of the laws, making our community safer, changing lives for the better, and serving our profession honorably. The first part of it about that public trust, I think that this is a part of what we're doing right now, is that as a department head and as an elected official, it is important that I stand behind the budget that I'm proposing, this tentative budget, that I know the budget that I'll be presenting, and that I can answer the questions related to that budget, and it helps build that public trust. The next slide is the organizational chart, which has our 23 FTEs plus the one contract position, which I will talk about later when we get into specific line item within the services and supplies. The next slide is a slide that was provided by Finance. I think this was provided to all department heads as part of our presentations. Each one is different, obviously, unique to that particular office. But this is a breakdown of those positions that you saw on the previous slide, and that we have 23 FTEs. I do want to state that, I've never told Finance this before, almost everything that they that they put out there for us in a shared drive has blue borders and things like that, and I always change the color. And this goes way back. I mean, I graduated from Douglas High, and when I see blue, it's part of that Douglas-Carson rivalry. So I don't use blue in my presentations if anyone asks. So the next slide are some of the goals. I've listed a total of four goals. First and foremost is, we always strive to provide exemplary legal advice and opinions to everybody that we represent. The second goal deals with our Special Victims Response Team, which I'll be talking about more in depth, again, when I get to a specific line item, the grants portion under our services and supplies budget. The next slide are our goals in working with community stakeholders, dealing with the opioid abuse. I'll be talking about some of the opioid abuse and the settlements that we've had as part of the accomplishments for calendar year 2024. And then I'm always assessing the manner in which our criminal cases are processed. The next slide, it was really hard, it's always hard to go through all the accomplishments. Every year, I meet with the chiefs of my civil division, my criminal division, and my chief investigator, and my office manager, and we talk about accomplishments through that year, and I get pages and pages of bullet points to review, and I've only selected a few. I wanted to start off with some of the opioid settlements. Douglas County received over $795,000 in 2024 from some of our litigation related to the opioid. If you recall, during my presentation last year, we had received $614,526 in 2023. We are proud of the work with other stakeholders in the county, being led by our county manager, Jennifer Davidson, on the reorganization of China Spring Youth Camp and the transition in the management structure. We believe this was a very good step forward for Douglas County as a whole, as well as the region, in servicing those juvenile offenders from all counties outside of Clark. The next slide highlights an accomplishment about our Justice Center project, of which we just recently sold those bonds. So a lot has gone into this. Zach Wadley has been the lead on this in my office, and has provided exemplary work on working towards this Justice Center project. The next accomplishment I list is that public nuisance abatement that I know that Commissioner Gardner is very well aware of this. There were two resolutions that were brought before this board in 2024, confirming the public nuisance at these two properties in the Topaz Ranch Estates area. There were special assessments which were authorized by this board against those properties, totaling over $112,000 as part of the remediation expenses. The next slide shows the South Shore Area Plan. Again, a lot of work with a lot of players, substantial amount of work from A.J. Hames in my civil division. I didn't list all 21 ordinances, but there were a lot of ordinances. I believe in the previous year, there were 19, but we had 21 ordinances in calendar year 2024. And then the last two accomplishments that I'm listing is defending multiple legal claims against the county. We were successful in obtaining dismissals in five separate lawsuits against the county and/or county elected officers, but all acting within their official capacities. And then the last accomplishment I list is more with the criminal division. These are the cases that were submitted to us either through arrest or submission for review for prosecution. Over 2,000 misdemeanors, 64 gross misdemeanors, 676 felony cases, for an average of 392 cases per prosecutor. You'll see more about this on the slides that will be coming up. These are part of the performance measures that I provide to the board and to the county manager's office every year. Next slide, please. This is kind of a segue in what the criminal division does. You all know so well about the civil division. Every single department has an attorney that's assigned, and almost all of the matters that work through the civil division ultimately are going to come before the board. But you're not as aware as to what the criminal division does. So this is the normal weekly court assignments. These are the dockets. The EFJC is East Fort Justice Court, TJC is Tahoe Justice Court, NJDC is Ninth Judicial District Court. So on Mondays, we have three courts going every week, and sometimes four. If there's a jury trial in Department One, Department One Judge Young has his law and motion starting at 9:00 a.m. on Tuesdays. But if there's a jury trial, he will always keep, in most cases, keep his Tuesday for his law and motion calendar. So his jury trials will start on a Monday, and then continue Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then repeat that. So if there is a jury trial starting in Judge Young's court, then we have four courts that we're going to be assigning attorneys to. In addition, we have charging and multiple bail hearings. So Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday is the, when I, is our three busiest days of the week as far as staffing the courts. The busiest day as far as the number of cases that we process are Wednesdays in East Fort Justice Court. Between the morning docket and the afternoon docket, majority of our afternoon dockets this year have been going till after 5:00 p.m., and it's not uncommon to have 60 cases on the afternoon docket. And those will be the cases where there is an indigent defense attorney that's assigned to that particular case. Thursdays and Fridays are, in addition to the bail hearings, are pretty much our evidentiary hearings. We have preliminary hearings, which are probable cause hearings on felonies and gross misdemeanors, where the justice of the peace will make a determination that there is slight or even marginal evidence to believe that a crime has been committed and committed by that particular defendant, and so they will then bind the case over to district court, and will kind of start that process again, and then have the trial in district court. Saturdays and Sundays, for the last two years, we've been doing weekend bail hearings. That was a requirement based upon a late slate of interpretation of a Nevada Supreme Court case, Valdez Jimenez, V-A-L-D-E-Z hyphen J-I-M-E-N-E-Z. So we have these bail hearings on Saturdays and Sundays. So we've turned into a seven-day-a-week in providing access to the courts. The next slide, and the next series of slides, are going to be some performance measures. These are the numbers of those cases that you will see with respect to the misdemeanor, gross misdemeanors, and felonies for the last four years. We were asked by Finance to look back four years, so you could do some comparisons. If you recall the presentation from Sheriff Coverly yesterday, towards the end of his presentation, there was a very large table that went back, I think back all the way to 2008, and there were certain columns within that. And so you, as you recall, you saw that there was a decrease in arrests from 2021 to 2022, and then even into 2023, and then an increase in arrests in 2024, and we kind of mirrored that, if you look at that. So our data is consistent with those trends. The next performance measure is the annual caseload per prosecutor. The high number four years ago, 545, is one of the reasons that led to me making a supplemental request that was approved by the board to add another FTE position for a prosecutor to reduce the volume or caseload per prosecutor or office, and we've been running at good numbers over the last three years. These numbers are higher than what the recommendations are. If you recall looking back at the FTEs, either through my organization chart or the FTE numbers, and I think it was the third slide from the beginning of my presentation, the numbers that we have are still less than a weighted caseload study that was published by the Department of Indigent Defense Services as to the delivery of indigent defense services within the counties and the number of defense attorneys that they are recommending or requiring pursuant to a consent judgment. In the Davis case, they're recommending 8.8 defense attorneys in Douglas County, which would then outnumber even the prosecutors. I will tell you, and they've heard it from me, it doesn't make sense. Everything in our criminal justice system is a funnel. You know, you look at the calls for service from law enforcement in the 30,000, and then they have so many arrests, so it's funneled down. Of those arrests and submissions, a certain number come to our office. You know, we had just over 2,000 misdemeanors, 670 or so felonies. So the funnel goes down. Of all of the cases that we reviewed and that we filed charges on, not every single one of those results in the appointment of an indigent defense attorney. Many people choose to hire their own counsel. Sometimes people decide, especially on lower-level misdemeanors, to represent themselves. We still have to go through the entire review process, so our caseload is always going to be much, much higher.
Mr. Jackson, before you leave that, so 382, is it?
392.
392. Okay. My glasses aren't working real well here. But 392 is still, to me, an incredible amount of cases. More than one a day, obviously, working seven days a week. But how long does it take generally to adjudicate a case? So how, you know, in other words, how long is a prosecutor carrying a case in his pockets, so to speak, or on his caseload?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Gardner. It all depends. There is no real average. Some individuals will come in at their initial appearance and want to plead guilty to the charges that are in the criminal complaint. There will be what's called a canvas by the judge to make sure they understand the rights that they're willing to waive, and that they do in fact waive those rights. So some of those could be a very quick turnover. Moving forward, when the attorneys are involved, it's a slower process. Typically, the pretrial conferences will be scheduled several weeks to, up to a couple of months from their initial arraignment. If they don't waive their speedy trial rights as to the 60 days on the misdemeanors, then we have to set the trial within 60 days. High 90 percentile of defendants waive their speedy trial rights. There are times where the state will assert a speedy trial right, but nevertheless, it's pretty much a lot more deference is given to the defendant and the defense attorney as to when that trial will occur. We do have some misdemeanors that will exceed one year from the time of the filing until the case is resolved. Most of our felonies can be a couple of years. So everyone has a different process depending on the complexity of that particular case. The numbers that, one of the biggest issues that we're dealing with are some of the criminal justice reforms from AB 236 that was enacted in 2019 that went into effect in 2021, for the most part, as well as the legislation that required the body cams be worn by police officers that were uniformed when they were with members of the public. For every one of those videos that we get on a case, we're reviewing it. We are not spending hundreds of hours a year. We are spending thousands of hours a year reviewing video footage. I can tell you that in the Martinez-Guzman case, because of the litigation that we had in that quadruple murder case, that I ended up reviewing, and some of them you have to go over and over again. You're looking for different types of details, depending on what experts are reviewing. But I spent nearly 1,000 hours on reviewing and re-reviewing videos and the body cam footage associated with the three different murder scenes, but four separate victims in that particular case. The next slide is the performance measures on the evidentiary hearings. These are the evidentiary hearings that are scheduled for each of those particular calendar years. The light gray are the preliminary hearings, which we had 160 in 2024 compared to 164 the previous year. We did see a drop in the preliminary hearings last calendar year as compared to the previous year, and those numbers dropped from that 2021 to 2022 primarily as a result of AB 236, again, the criminal justice reforms, that omnibus bill, which was the largest reforms we had since 1969. Next slide is the traffic pre-trials, beginning January 1st of 2023, a legislation that went into effect that decriminalized the majority of the moving violations and turned them into civil infractions. As a result of that, we saw a big reduction, starting in 2023 and 2024, as to the number of traffic cases that we actually pre-trial on. We only pre-trial on them if they will be a misdemeanor, remain as a misdemeanor. So our moving violations, you know, typical equipment violations, your basic speeds, whether you're 1 to 10 over, 11 to 15 over, 16 to 20 over, those are all now civil infractions. So they don't even come through our office. We don't see those cases. Now, I'm going to be getting into the budget. This next one was also a slide that was provided by Finance, and I wanted you to see this, because what I wanted to highlight is this. I really believe in this process, and I really appreciate that the Board of Commissioners here is spending the time. You're not spending a couple of hours going through the tentative budget and just rubber-stamping it, that you're actually listening to the presentations by the department heads and me, the elected official. Because if you just saw these numbers come across, you'd be saying, hey, the adopted budget that the DA's office is currently operating under is $485,000. That was approved by this board last budget cycle. And now you're asking for nearly $107,000 less? So yeah, we're going to approve that. What a great job you're doing. Well, there's a story behind that. And you deserve to know, and I think the members of the public deserve to know as to why that is less. It's not that there's $107,000 savings. So anyways, the next slide is...
Or it could be, why did you spend so much when you can spend so little, right? Turn the coin over, right?
I appreciate that, too. So this next slide is the expenditure summary. Again, I changed it from the blue outlines. And what I wanted to do is at the very bottom of it, under the services and supplies totals, you'll see there's kind of just a gray highlight. The next eight slides, I'm going to have highlighted specific light items within this expenditure summary, so I can talk to you about what those numbers are in the dollar change between the adopted fiscal year '25 budget and the proposed tentative budget for 2026. But those are the same numbers that were on the previous slide. So the next slide is budget line item 520.064. This is the travel budget. Looking at this, you can see that the 2025 adopted budget was 1,500, that our actuals under that today are 5,505. So that is $4,005 above what we had budgeted in 2025. As part of this, they, and I'll come back to that and why we have that number, but we're asking for a $1,000 increase for the 2026 tentative budget, going back to $1,000 above the adopted budget of 1,500. So if you go to the very bottom of this slide, where you see that the adopted budget was 485, and our actuals to date are at $255,000, so we are $230,000 below. There was some significant training opportunities that were available in 2024. I had six attorneys in my office that attended the training, so airfare, hotels, and per diems made up why I spent that 5,000, authorized the $5,505. It was all training. And the process is, for members of the public, typically, the procurement card will be utilized to pay for the flights or reserve the flights and to reserve the hotel. The per diem is typically a request of a check. But the whole process on all of this is that those invoices are submitted with a voucher, with all of the attachments as to what that conference is, or what the particular training is, what the days are. All of that stuff then goes through a process. We submit it off. I have to review everything. I sign off on it. If I attend any of this, or if I ever use the procurement card that is assigned to me, there isn't a requirement, but I, as the elected official, I send everything to the county manager. So Jennifer Davidson will review anything that I do, that I'm going to be spending even a penny on using my procurement card. I rarely ever use it, but when I do use it, it goes off to be separately reviewed by our county manager to make sure there's always that check and balance. The next slide is highlights budget line item 520...
Can I stop you, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, please.
I just want to say on that travel expense and that training, I appreciate that you would see value in training and make an adjustment to make it possible, because that keeping current and going to continuing legal ed that is relevant and helpful is, frankly, I'm surprised it's as low as it is, because those are important things, and I'm really glad that you are supporting that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I will tell you that after that recession of 2008, where we were not only zeroed out on just about everything through the 2012-13 budget, and actually had taken some reductions, I kept my travel budget at zero up until just a couple of years ago, and that's when I first requested that money be put back into it. So we were really trying to find things that were so much more local, or even some of the online. I'm telling you, there is a difference, though, between online and in-person training, and being able to sit around and discuss during the lunch breaks and afterwards with other prosecutors or other civil attorneys throughout the state and discuss certain types of issues. You almost bring as much back from that as you did from the training itself. So the next slide is the motor pool expense. I understand this is only $734, which is the change, but again, it's to highlight that this was an increase. This is an increase that was provided to us by Public Works. This is based upon what their anticipated maintenance costs and fuel costs will be for the four vehicles that are assigned to my office, as well as there's always a portion that goes towards a replacement cost. So that is the increase of that number. The next slide is the rents and leases of buildings. This is the Boulay Building, which is across Water Street, which is just south from the current Judicial and Law Enforcement Center. This houses the civil division of the district attorney's office. This is a lease agreement that was first approved by this board in November of 2018. Section 6 under that lease agreement has what the increases in those lease amounts will be, and so that $2,004 is pursuant to that lease agreement that has been previously approved by the board.
What I wanted to mention on that particular area, Mr. Jackson, is that hopefully, we'll probably have to address it in the next budget as well, but after that, this division is moving to the new Justice Center, so that that item will become zero, right?
Yes.
Yes.
It'll be, that'll be zeroed out as soon as we move to the Justice Center and give proper notice under the lease. proper notice under the lease.
What's our, what's our notice requirement? So maybe we need to do that now, so.
I believe it's 60 days under that. The next line item, this is the one that's in the parentheses, is $132,958 less in the proposed tentative budget as opposed to what the adopted budget is for 2025. In, in a nutshell, as you recall, well, at the January 16th, 2025 meeting, this board approved a professional services contract with Kerry Rosser Law in a certain amount, and that makes up a portion of it. The other amount that we had, part of our 2025 adopted budget, was a professional services contract that was approved over a year ago with Melanie Bruketa. When Melanie Bruketa applied for the judicial vacancy for Carson City Justice Court and was appointed by the Carson City Board of Supervisors and took that position, I believe it was in June of last year, it created a vacancy in our office, which we were unable to fill for the first six, seven months. So we brought this to the board, I believe, at the January 6th meeting. It was on the consent agenda, agenda, item F, which was to restore the full-time position under the salaries and benefits portion. So all of this really happened as there was a transfer during the current budget. But because our comparison as to what the adopted budget was, that's why it's reflected here. So this is not a savings, it just moved over to the salaries and benefits budget. The next slide is budget line item 521.130. This again shows a, the parentheses of the $13,000. This is not a savings. Up until this budget, we had one item, which was our West Law Online Legal Research that was within Legal Services. Finance informed us that we really should have that under our software. So we have moved it from Legal Services to Software. The other amount of this budget of the 9,000 is for an annual contract with Hooster, H-O-O-S-T-E-R. This is used by our investigators. It is an app on a phone to be able to find information related to defendants that may have a warrant, victims and witnesses. Sometimes we get reports where phone numbers are wrong, numbers have been changed or addresses are wrong for serving them with summons. So we utilize that. This also includes certified priors. We just had a recent case on a DUI and a person had two prior DUI convictions out of a, out of a county in California, $580 to obtain certified copies of the priors. We also use this for photographs. I have a evidentiary hearing in one of the murder cases next week and printing off photos for that evidentiary hearing was $300. So just to kind of give you an idea about what makes up this portion of the budget. The next budget line item is 532055, books and periodicals. This is primarily used for all of the amendments to our Nevada revised statutes annotated. They don't come out every year. So right now, after the session, it's going to take a while for them to publish those There's, there's two types of attorneys in my office. There's the attorneys that do everything online 100%. And then there's some that will do certain legal research online, but when you get into the NRS, they like to have that book in front of them with all the annotations. I'm one of them and Doug's one of them. We've cut it down now to four volumes in our office. So we have two in the Civil Division and two in the Criminal Division. One set is housed in my office, one set is housed in, in Doug's office. So they're about 400, $300 and $395 per set. So we have reduced that. This is also used if we do have a vacancy. The state bar charges $584 a month to advertise through the state bar. We can't advertise through the record courier. We need to advertise to licensed attorneys. The next budget item is our software. So again, part of the increase is the West Law and the new contract that we have for 2025 through 2026. Over $16,000 of this is our software case management through prosecutor by Carpel. We have $6,790 in our licensing fees for Office 365, and that number is provided to us by our court IT. We have our client access licenses, commonly referred to as the COWs through SHI International and for 2,612. We have 11 Adobe Pro licenses for 1,188. Microsoft Assurance licenses, 803. A Zoom subscription for the Civil Division at 299 and also one for the Criminal Division at 299. Our website hosting is 340 and we have a video editing program at 250. That's pretty much what makes up that amount there. The last highlighted item under the expenditures is the grant services and supplies. If you look under the highlighted 2025 adopted budget, our number was zero. And, and it has been that way for the last, I believe, four budget cycles. Before then, we used to include the grant services, grants in our services and supplies for SVRT grant. And so they've added it back in for this budget process moving forward, and I'm thankful that, that they have. For the last four years, including the current 2025 adopted budget, this was in account 997, non-departmental. So it was captured, it was just some other place, but difficult, I think, for members of the public to kind of find out what's going on with the grant. So I want to talk to you a little bit about the grant. This is a grant that I first applied for in 2007. We received our last grant award in September of 2023 for three consecutive fiscal years, beginning October 1st of 2023 through, you know, whatever that September 30th is of 26, for $750,000. To date, we've received in grant awards, $4,197,018 for our Special Victims Response Team Grant. This is a coordinated community response where the public sector works with a private nonprofit, Family Support Council of Douglas County, which is our only victim service provider within the Valley floor, provides some shelter and a lot of services. So what that grant has paid for is a full-time investigator position in my office. It has paid for a part-time Department of Alternative Sentencing Probation Officer for all cases related to domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault and stalking. It also, under the contract portion of it that is here, this is to pay for a full-time advocate at the Family Support Council. Also, they are assisting with the administration and the report writing, our quarterly reports for drawdowns that also go through finance and a grant manager within the finance. So we have a lot of oversight. I can tell you that when I first started this grant, everything was within my office. And so we would have to submit all of the required documentation through a grant services online. And I remember the mandatory training from the Inspector General's office about what happens if you mess up on it. So I really am thankful that we have finance that has added that on the last four or five years in reviewing everything that we do and all of our submissions. The number, I do want to tell you that the number that you currently are seeing in the column, the tentative, is, is not accurate. That number is going to probably be around $76,000. I'm working with finance and that will be part of the tentative budget. But this is a reimbursement, 100% reimbursement from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office on Violence Against Women. They've reimbursed it 100% since we've got these grant awards starting back in 2007. But we need to show where this money is somewhere and I, and it, and it should be in this part of the budget.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
I just want to loop back to the mission statement where you said change lives and just really, this is so wonderful that you're doing this.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So that's the expenditure summary. And again, I, I want to thank the board for, for doing this. I, I think that this is an important part. I can tell you that with the fraud that occurred out at Motor Pool, starting in 2012, that if line items had gone through like this as part of that budget process, there's no way that that would have happened. So a lot of things have changed since then. We, we have a lot of other things internally and externally to try to prevent anything like that ever from happening again. But I think it is important that you're able to see, that members of the public are able to see. They can go back and they can look at my previous budget presentations to see if there's anything. But whenever we're talking about anything that falls under an inventory and inventory controls, always take a closer look at those. There are certain things that are much more susceptible to fraud internally, but this is a big part of the process, not only under your financial powers under chapter 244, but of your budget powers under chapter 354. The next slide. I have no supplemental requests for this budget, tentative budget, nor will I have anything for the final budget. I didn't have any supplemental requests last year. Next slide. Possible fiscal impacts that are not part of this budget. You heard from Sheriff Coverly yesterday that we currently have in custody four defendants on three separate murder cases. One of those cases is moving quicker than the others, the case that I'm taking to a preliminary hearing next week. One of the cases is one of the most complex cases that we've dealt with. One of the best investigations I've ever seen in my career in putting together a case involving the two defendants. That is going to be a very expensive case to take to trial. There are a lot of subject matter experts associated with that, but in all of these cases, there will be experts. And I, and it's not just on the prosecution side. In those cases where there is an indigent defense attorney that's assigned, they can then make an application directly to a judge for payment of certain expenses for expert witnesses. And we need to make sure that there is certain money that is, that is set aside. I don't budget a lot in my services and supplies, dealing with, you know, the witnesses or the expert witnesses. But in cases like this, I, I do think that it would be very prudent for, to, to set some of that aside. We also have, in a case that just happened in the last few days up near Glenbrook, a horrible head-on collision. The allegations are that the driver, at-fault driver was under the influence and has three or more prior offenses that fit within the statute. So that elevates that case now from a DUI causing death to what's called vehicular homicide, which carries life imprisonment. So it falls in the same category as our other murder cases. So currently now we have four murder cases with five separate defendants. So I would submit that if it is available, if all of these cases went to trial during fiscal year 25, 26, at a bare minimum, I, I was thinking it would be 50 to 75,000, but I, I am concerned that that one murder case could far exceed that. So I would suggest $150,000 be set aside for these high-profile cases if they do proceed to trial during the next fiscal year. Challenges. Always meeting the evolving challenges of fentanyl. I'm the district attorney in the state who sits on the quarterly meetings of the drug labs, the three drug labs that we have. There's always emerging drugs of abuse. It's really a comparison between what Washoe County processes versus Clark County, Las Vegas Metro, and now Henderson has a lab that's been up for two years. It's incredible, the amount of fentanyl that we're seeing and mixed fentanyl with other drugs of abuse, cocaine, methamphetamine and such. So dealing with that is difficult, as well as navigating the criminal justice reforms over the last four sessions and what we're currently working with. And then always recruiting, hiring and retaining the best prosecutors and civil attorneys. And in order for the criminal justice system to work efficiently, this also would apply to the delivery of indigent defense services. And you probably have heard from staff, including the county manager's office, the difficulty in recruiting highly trained ethical defense attorneys to come into Douglas County under these fantastic contracts and work here and providing these indigent defense services. The next slide is future needs. The very first bullet point, I know we're all working on it and, but I've been highlighting this for over a decade. So until we move in, it's, it's going to remain a part of that. And then hopefully you do recall that I highlighted the need for this victim coordinator last budget. I frankly do not have space. Outside of the Special Victims Response Team and the work that they have done in part of this coordinated community response, the victim coordinator position that was created and approved by this board several years ago, three years ago, was due in large part to all of the requirements that were put upon my office under Marcy's law that was enshrined into our constitution five years ago. The work that our victim coordinator does is absolutely tremendous. Victim coordinator for yesterday's bail hearing on that vehicular homicide up at the lake between family members and friends, they're in attendance as well as those online. There was a significant number of people, there's a lot of work for that. The issue that, that we're, have facing is I have a single coordinator. And if you remember that weekly calendaring where I have at least three courts, especially on Mondays and Tuesdays, which are the most difficult, we have our sentencing hearings on our felonies in district courts on Mondays and Tuesdays. And the coordinator just can't be in two places at once. And so we're constantly trying to work on those issues. We absolutely need another position. I will bring that back most likely next year to have that funded mid-budget for '26, '27. And that would come in as a supplemental request.
I, I took down several notes. And the two fiscal notes I made, you answered those questions regarding the, the drop in professional services and then of course, the lease of the building. I appreciate your, your, your presentation and it's been very complete. I would be remiss if I didn't indicate how, I want to compliment you on, on your staff, especially the Civil Division, who I come in contact with in our duties almost weekly. Extremely, I've always found them to be extremely competent and very willing to engage and give us good information. So I compliment that. I would say fortunately, fortunately, I haven't had any encounters with your Criminal Division and I, I hope to remain that in case, except in a social setting. So I, I run into them every once in a while at a social setting, but, but I'm trying to stay out of the, I, I don't want to become a friend of Dan's or yours, so to speak. Anyways, and as you probably know, there is a, a lot of things in the news on a national level regarding the Department of Government Efficiency. And, and surprisingly enough, you know, and I had members of our community call me and say, we need a, we need a DOGE department in our county, okay? And with, with all those people that would, that would make those comments, I'm certainly hoping that they're online, watching all these presentations yesterday, today, next Monday and Tuesday also. You would think that we would have a gallery, fellow people- You would think that we would have a gallery full of people looking for waste, fraud, and abuse in our budgets. And so I'm kind of surprised that they're not here. I certainly hope they're online. But I know that we have a, and we had a slight presentation from our county manager and our COO regarding waste, fraud, and abuse and those things. And I know that we're looking forward to having a more robust discussion about that as a presentation later on. But when your department becomes involved in that, and we've had this discussion, can you give us a rundown, mostly for the public here, on what we do and how you handle issues of suspected waste, fraud, and abuse in our county?
Sure. And thank you for that question. I think it is important. First of all, with the DOGE, the way that I understood that at the very beginning and the primary purpose was more on the, it was supposed to be, I thought, about the reviewing the technology, a big part of it. But since then, we know that there's been massive layoffs, that they are finding a lot of fraud, or at least waste, and potential abuses, and they're handling that through that particular process. After the, I was going to try to not use the word "tirigate," but I think that everybody understands that. But after those fraudulent activities, the response by the county has been pretty tremendous in what has been implemented. The Audit Committee arose out of that. I've never really understood why it was called the Audit Committee. It truly isn't an audit committee. I mean, you look at the financial efficiencies also, which is part of what the DOGE is doing, is looking at financial efficiencies at the federal level. So that is part of what they would do. But there were a lot of policies that were changed as a result of that. The Fraud, Waste, and Abuse Program has, I believe, has been very successful. There's no doubt that individuals feel comfortable, those that both work in the county as those, as well as people that don't work for the county, of submitting these anonymous complaints. It goes to a third party where it is reviewed and information will be gathered. We have received referrals for that. Just a couple of years ago, we prosecuted and convicted a former county employee who was a case manager at the time that the fraudulent activity was engaged in. There was $4,400 that was taken from the county through the fraudulent activity. Restitution has been paid in full. That individual was prosecuted to the full extent of the law and sentenced to 36 months in the Nevada Department of Corrections and was sent to prison with no prior criminal record, and a lot of people that wrote letters in support. But the clear message there, not only from my office, but also the judges, is if you're a county employee and you're going to commit a theft and steal from the county, you're going to prison. So we have two current cases that are pending that have been, there's files on. One of them is going to a jury trial, July. I don't have the exact dates, it's scheduled. When I say a two-week jury trial, there's two days each week that are dark, so it's actually, I think, scheduled over the eight days as opposed to the 10 days. But that is in mid-July, and I believe that's in front of Judge Gregory. And then we have another case that has a pre-trial conference meeting. There's been three continuances requested by the defense attorney from this former county employee who committed a theft while a county employee dealing with the misuse of the fuel card. The allegation is put gas in the person's personal vehicle. That next court hearing is in April. A trial will be set. We'll be pushing for a trial much quicker than later. So we get those. Two of those cases came through the Fraud, Waste, and Abuse Program. The third case, the last one I talked about, was from some of the internal policies and internal controls that were put into place, where we had a manager that made these observations, made the proper type of inquiry, and then did a referral. So there was a two-track investigation. There was the internal investigation, which was separate and apart from the criminal investigation that was conducted by the sheriff's office and then submitted to our office for review and for prosecution. So it appears to be working very well. The changes that finance has done in all of the reviews now are exceptional. I pride myself, when we do submit vouchers, of attaching everything. And a couple times of a year, you know, we get a kickback that, you know, there's something else we needed to attach, and I appreciate that. It sends that reminder to me that they are reviewing every single invoice that comes across and making sure that all the proper documentation has been submitted. So in a sense, our Audit Committee kind of acts, to a certain degree, like DOGE. They have the ability to do some of those. But we're not the federal government, we don't have those number of employees, we don't have a lot of those different programs. This is not about the DEI, this is not about other programs, which they have cut out, dealing with the climate change, which is a part of what they're looking at also. We don't have control over any of that at the local level. But I do appreciate that question.
So it seems to me that you said that the employee currently, or just recently, used the P-card, purchasing or procurement card that he was issued, or her, I don't know who it is, and I don't know that you can, but it doesn't, for two tanks of gas, doesn't seem like a lot of money. I mean, that's got to be less than, I would imagine, you know, even if I were filling up my F-250, which has a 29-yallon tank, it would be probably less than $100. So, I mean, so we consider those still raising to the level, right?
Yes, the amount of that is, it's over $100 and it's less than $150, but absolutely. The position that I take in the office, again, is if you're a county employee and you're going to steal from the county, you're going to be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law.
Well, I appreciate that, and it's important to send that message, not only to, you know, our employees, but also our community. So, yeah. And I do appreciate the fact that we put in the controls. It appears to me that we put in the controls to assure that we don't have those, and we're catching them fairly quickly if we do. So, and then the last question I have is, of course, you know, every two years, our state legislature gets together and tries to figure out how they can further, anyways, I won't editorialize on that, I'll let you. New legislation you see coming that could have negative impacts on your department?
Well, I could always come back and talk at another board meeting about that, because my list is pretty long. I'm following, I think, 385 bills currently. A lot of them, I think, would have a negative impact, I believe, on public safety with respect to criminal justice reforms. I am very excited about our governor's BDR, his Safe Neighborhood Bill that will, I don't know if it was introduced yesterday, it was supposed to be. But that would be a nice step forward if that was to move through both chambers.
And I appreciate that, yes. I would hope that we have a community forum, as we usually do, after June session ends, and, you know, where you previously have given us your input on the bills that did pass that could have some positive or negative impact on our county. So I look forward to that session later on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation.
I don't have questions, but I want to say your respect for your accountability to the public is much appreciated, and I have a lot of confidence in you and your office, and just really appreciate your excellent work.
Thank you very much.
All right. We will take a five-minute break until 11:05, and then we will have the Clerk Treasurer.
It is 11:07. We were almost at 11:05, not quite, but we are glad you are here. Clerk Treasurer Amy Bergens and Nikki Leeper, which your title is?
Assistant County Clerk.
Assistant County Clerk, all right. Grateful to have you.
Thank you, Amy Bergens, Douglas County Clerk Treasurer, for the record. So I think the majority of you know, but just for the members of the public that are perhaps watching and haven't seen any of our presentations in the past, I just want to kind of explain how the Clerk Treasurer's Office works. Under the Clerk Treasurer's Office, there are three separate offices, the Clerk's Office, the Treasurer's Office, and the Elections Office. Clerk and Tahoe General Services, or TGS, are all overseen by the Assistant Clerk. The Treasurer's Office is overseen by the Assistant Treasurer, and the Elections Office is overseen by the Elections Administrator. So as I go through these budgets, each of them I will do separately, and I will have the person that oversees them here, because I do not have the ability to know every single detail on all three of the offices. So we're going to start with the Clerk and the Tahoe General Services budget. The mission statement of the Clerk is, "Working together as one strong team to provide our community with quality county services while exhibiting integrity in all we do, exemplifying customer service, and demonstrating fidelity to the law." The department description is, "With rotation between two office locations, the Mindon and the State Line Offices, the Clerk, SMART, DMV, Revenue Collection, and Election Functions are provided to the public as our external customers and to various boards and county departments as our internal customers." You will see on all of my departments that Elections is listed, even though I have an Elections Office. When it comes to actually running the elections, it is all hands on deck, and throughout the years, even in off-election years, all of the departments provide feedback, learn our processes, and are ready to go when it is an election year. So all of my staff are involved in the elections. You could see on this workload slide that you could see the Clerk functions are done at both offices. We've got marriage license issuance, marriage officiant certificates, fictitious firm name filings, notary bond filings, outdoor festival permits, passport acceptance agents. And then in the Valley Office, the SMART team, which is the Clerk, Minute, and Recording Team, which are the team that clerk the meetings that you guys have, Board of Health, Debt Management, Board of Equalization Planning Commission, and then they also write the minutes for those. They clerk the various boards, transcribe the minutes verbatim, which is something that started under Kathy Lewis's tenure, and we have continued because we feel like verbatim minutes gets rid of the ability for us to interpret what you're trying to say. Instead, what you say is- Instead, what you say is actually there, so the public reading them will be able to determine what you are trying to say. Prepare and publish meeting notes, notices, retain ordinances and resolutions, and agreement indexing. The election functions are candidate filing, run vote centers for early voting and for Election Day, and same-day voter registration. The Clerk team has really taken on the same-day voter registration, which is ever-evolving. They've taken on everything, especially in the new system that we switched to. They have taken on the processes and procedures and all the guides and training, all of the other stuff. It was, they were a godsend, this election cycle, taking that on. It was just one thing off of our plate. At the Lake Office, the State Line DMV is up there, so we do vehicle registration renewals, new vehicle registration, vehicle title transfers, special and personalized plates, handicap placard processing. And then they also, because it is the office at the lake, they also do a little bit of the Treasurer function by taking in property tax collection, county department revenue collection, and reconcile office close and deposit. So, yes, Chairman?
Oh, when you're finished with that.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, just back on preparing or transcribing verbatim meeting minutes. It's so helpful. I am pleased that they're verbatim. I'm wondering, do you have software that does a chunk of that job, and then you compare that transcribed to, or how does it work?
We do. We have software that transcribes it. We have actually a couple of different types. It depends on what the Clerk that's writing the minutes prefers, that we can run the audio through, and it transcribes it. It's not as amazing as you would think with the technology that we have, so even there, it's punctuation and cleanup of words. It's how well is the person enunciating when they are speaking into the microphone? How close to the microphone are they? Is there background noise? So for every hour of meeting, it takes staff about four hours to write. So for a four-hour meeting, that's 16 hours of staff time to write verbatim minutes. So it's still very time-consuming, even with the transcription software. But we have an amazing team that is rock star status, and they do such an amazing job with it.
That may incentivize us to make sure we're concise with our comments.
We would appreciate it.
Ms. Bergens, so, and I get questions on this on a fairly routine basis while we provide the DM, and by the way, I mean, I should say that very few members of the public understand exactly what you do, okay, and how involved you are in the different functions. And so I appreciate your activities in going out into the public domain and actually doing workshops and seminars and speeches about what you, what your office does. So that's very commendable. But residents are asking why these DMV services, even though we can't renew a driver's license or those kind of things, why those are not available here on the Valley floor versus having to travel to the lake. So.
So it is a contract that we have with the state, and the state contract only allows us to do it up at the Lake Office. But I will say, as far as registration renewals, those can be dropped off down here at the Valley. We inter-office them up, and when I, that's how I renew my vehicles, and my children's vehicles that are still in my name, so I have a lot. And within like two days, I have received my renewal form and the sticker versus if I do it even through the website at DMV, it will take multiple weeks to receive it.
So that's a DMV, that's a DMV thing. It's not a local thing that we're making.
Correct. And also, when we do those services here in Douglas County at our State Line DMV office, a part of the funds stay here in Douglas County. So it helps to offset the cost of having that office. Okay, moving on. So goals. Didn't workload come first? Oh, okay, I thought they were out of order. Goals. So our goals for this upcoming year is incorporation of digitized historic marriage license records into the current software system. We have done a digitization project of a lot of the documents that we have that are historic, but we haven't incorporated them into the software system that we're using. Implementation of new state DMV processes at the State Line Office. Complete digitizing of historic marriage officiant certificates issued before the five-year term resolution became enacted. So that's, a lot of the digitization projects have been long-term projects that we do in between writing minutes and the other services that we provide. Participate and assist with upcoming statewide mock elections. We'll talk about this more during the Elections presentation, but as you know, we switched to a new voter registration and election management software that is statewide. However, we are still working on some backend things. Therefore, we will be continuing to do four or five mock elections before the next election in June of '26. So the Clerk and Treasurers' Office will both be very hands-on with that, with the rest of the election staff. Continue to build public trust by being the source of reliable and accurate information when interacting with our customers in the various services we provide. Focus on mentoring and professional development with in-depth interdepartmentment training as well as capitalizing on various state association trainings and conference opportunities. I will say that Nikki is a very impressive manager, and she does pour into all of her staff and into me on a daily, regular basis. She puts me in my place regularly. We all need that. But she, the professional development and the mentoring that she has in her department is definitely a standard that the rest of the county can look up to. So this is very important to her, and I appreciate all that she does with her staff. So the tie to the strategic plan is serving our community with quality county services. We are not a revenue generating department, though we do collect fees for some of the services we provide. We really are NRS-driven as far as the clerking. That's our primary function. The rest of them are auxiliary functions that do capture some revenue, but we are not supported by the revenue that we generate. Accomplishments. So in the last year, we have the conclusion of the fictitious firm name filing digitization or digitizing project for all of 2012 through 2019 filings into this current software system. Completion of digitizing the 2022 through 2024 notary bond filings. Creation of guides and training for same-day registration processes for the implementation of total vote, the new voter registration system. Assisted with the successful administration of the 2024 general election with the new voter registration system and new poll pads. I'm going to just take another moment. I know this keeps going back to elections, but honestly, last year was very election-heavy due to the switch to the new system. That took my Clerk and Treasurer staff off of functions that they typically would have done. We would be further on digitization projects. We would be further on some of these other things had we not been pulled away from all of the various duties to make sure that the presidential election did not fail, which it did not, and I'm very proud of my staff, and we all have trauma bonded through that experience. That's our new, that's our new word for the clerks across the state, is that we trauma bonded through that experience last year, and it made us better people and brought us closer together, but it did put us a little bit behind on some of the projects that we had in our queues. I think I left off on began digitizing of historic marriage officiant certificates issued before the five-year term resolution became enacted, and continued annual passport acceptance agent training. For those of you that don't know, you don't just go, hey, I want to accept passports. The training is extensive. Every single staff member has to take it. There is ongoing information that is released. I apologize. What are they called? They're not memos. Newsletters, quarterly newsletters that come out with new information that really you can't just glaze over. It's very important that these are done correctly. People are reliant on us doing them well so that when we send them in, we don't get them, they don't get sent back with errors on them. So it's a lot of, it's a lot of work to take passports, but we do know that it is something that the members of the public want. When we didn't have it for a while, they begged us to bring it back. We have already accepted 1,147 passport applications this fiscal year, which is an additional $40,000 of added revenue. So it does bring in revenue.
Are these, are these initial passport applications, not renewals?
Correct.
People do renewals online?
Correct. Correct. We don't do renewals in our office. We only do first-time or new applications. As far as staff goes, full-time equivalent positions on the, on the, there are two budgets for this. There's the Clerk budget and the Tahoe General Services budget, but they are, the staff, it encompasses the whole office. So on the Clerk side, we have the Assistant County Clerk. There's only one of her. Deputy Clerk Senior, there's one, and Deputy Clerk, there's two. And then on the Tahoe General Services, there's Deputy Clerk Senior One and Deputy Clerk Two. So it's a total of seven positions. There is one position that is always up at the lake. There is one position that is always, that is Deputy Clerk, that is always down here at the Valley, and that is for stability among the office to know the day-to-day. If someone comes in and then comes back the next day, we don't want all new staff here that can't answer the question, like, that can't follow up with that person. The rest of the staff go back and forth between the two offices, and it's very, Nikki is very good about putting the schedule together as far in advance as she can for the months to be able to say, this is where you're going to be. But the rest of the staff go back and forth and know, are proficient in every single function of the office. So expenditure summary, I, this is for the Clerk, the 182, the Clerk, and the next slide will be the Tahoe General Services. As you can see, the increase from fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '26 is 0.5%. It is very minimal. Nikki spends county money like it's her personal money. She is very tight with her budget, very thrifty, very thrifty. I meant that in a good way. I guess I should disclose that. Because if I was spending it like it was my money, I'd have all kinds of new shoes. No, okay, I should, I guess, I know Nikki, therefore I know. She's like, oh, snot. I guess I should have disclosed that. She's a penny-pincher in her personal life, therefore she's a penny-pincher with the county. She is very accountable to the taxpayers. She does not, she does not, she's not out there going, ooh, I've got some extra money. What can I spend it on? She is very frugal with, with the county's money, as if it is her own money. How is a better way to say that? I will, remind me next year not to say it that way. And she is in charge of not only the Clerk budget, or she oversees the Clerk and the Tahoe General Services. You can see that the Tahoe General Services budget, we are increasing by 4%, a little bit higher, however, still very minimal year-over-year, especially with the budget of, you know, $13,000. They're very minimal budgets. Oh, and the increase, Nikki's letting me know, the increase is risk management, which she does not control. So she kept it level. So with that, that's a fairly easy one. We don't have any sample amount of requests on the Clerk or TGS side. Everything is going very well in those offices, and we are, we're just thrilled to present a balanced budget and the ability to increase at the lowest possible amount.
I don't see questions up here. We don't get the opportunity to thank you. You just make everything happen in the background and do it extremely well, and we should publicly thank you more often. But thank you very much, Ms. Lieper. We function better because of you.
Nikki Lieper, Assistant County Clerk, for the record. I appreciate that very much. Anyone who knows me knows I like being behind the scenes, not public speaking, but I do want to say it is a team effort. I absolutely have the best team that is willing to jump in and do whatever's needed, so I couldn't do it without them. Thank you for your time.
So we always refer to the TOT. I think we need to recoin that to think of the transcribers, so since we use that all the time, so we can curb our, our comments. So that's our safe word. TOT?
Okay, from here, and I apologize in the packet, I didn't, I didn't disclose to Finance the order that I wanted the packet. So Elections is next, but I'm going to skip Elections and do that at the end because I think that'll be a larger conversation, so we're going to go into the Treasurers' presentation now. So with me, I have Megan Doris. She is my Assistant Treasurer, and how many months have you been with us now? Four? Four months. She has been with the county, and she is rocking it. And so I thought I'd throw her to the wolves and make her sit next to me today. So. Okay, so mission statement for the Treasurer's side. We provide, we pride ourselves in providing excellent customer service as we perform vital functions for Douglas County. The description is the Treasurers' Office works to safeguard the financial resources of the county by managing the cash flow and identifying and mitigating risks as it relates to investment management. We do this while ensuring accurate financial reporting, ensuring compliance with relevant local, state, and federal laws, and by being transparent to the public. So workload, daily tasks. Obviously, deposit monies, we are, the Treasurers' Office is very similar to the bank for the county. We deposit monies received by the various county departments every day. We reconcile and balance all the county bank accounts, provide exceptional customer service to the public and the other departments when they come in, deposit and receipt property tax payments. Monthly tasks, we add interest to delinquent property tax accounts, review investment accounts for, and do interest allocation, verify upcoming maturities, and analyze the FMV per Gatsby 31 and debt management. Annual tax, property tax sale is held annually. It is, we are working on it right now. It is coming up in April. It will be held online again. We are using bid for assets. Last year was the first year that we did an online auction. It worked very well. We brought in more revenue than we typically would generate if we held it right here in this building. So we plan, or we are doing it through bid for assets again this year, online. The information is on our website to include the properties that will be going up for auction if they are not paid off in time. We send property tax bills to all property owners and mortgage companies and interested parties, and we do audit preparation and assistance. The goals for this upcoming year.
Can I?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Audit, preparation, and assistance. That's for the county audit?
Correct.
External auditors?
Correct. Yeah, they will reach out. It's done through Finance, and Finance reaches out to us, and we work in conjunction with them to pull all the documents and ensure that our external auditors have what they need in order to do the audit.
Got it. Thanks.
I'm going to stop right here before we go into goals and accomplishments and disclose that this year has been a tough year with, or last year with the election. We also lost two senior positions, one of which didn't leave the county. She went over to Finance, so she is still an asset to the county. She went over to finance, so she is still an asset to the county. And another one retired after working for the county for almost 30 years. So we lost a lot of institutional knowledge in the treasurer's office. We have, we have taken this opportunity, and I did fully disclose all of this to Megan when I hired her, though she doesn't remember all the conversations. We have taken this opportunity as, oh, a new set of eyes, a fresh look into the department. What can we do to build up our team? What can we do to put better practices and policies into place? What are we doing that perhaps has been the, the way we've always done it instead of moving forward and looking at ways we can do things new? So this year is a year of new for the treasurer's office. We are still ensuring that we hit all of our benchmarks as far as NRS and what needs to happen. However, we also are doing it with a new set of eyes. So it might be taking us a little bit longer to accomplish some of the tasks because we are looking over every avenue that we can for improvements. So with that, our goals, of course, safeguard Douglas County's financial well-being to ensure long-term stability and growth by managing financial resources effectively. Identify and mitigate financial risks that could impact the, the county's stability. Increase knowledge within the department by cross-training all staff. Increase efficiency of processes by department collaboration to determine what works well and what needs to be adjusted to work better. Create reference guides for processes as we move forward and with hiring and retention within the department, and participate and assist with upcoming statewide mock elections. There's those elections again.
So Ms. Bergens, as you've indicated here, and I think that's particularly maybe needs to highlight, create reference guides. As you indicated just a few minutes ago, you've lost a lot of institution knowledge. I would imagine if you maybe had reference guides, that would have assisted you in, in the transition of losing that.
Yeah, and I, I will say that there are guides. There are some. We have been working on it for previous couple of years on, on doing guides. There's not a guide for everything yet, but ultimately, our goal is to have a guide. You know, if, if I win the lottery, I'm taking all my stuff with me. And so if all new staff come in, you know, there has to be a reference point. Where do we start? What do we do? So yes, the reference guides are, are vital to being able to, to ensure that the, the department operates. But I will say that with the loss of our previous assistant treasurer, Kathy Kaiser, who is here, she, she was gracious enough to take a lot of the work with her until Megan came on board, and she also has, is a resource. She's there if we have questions. She is, she is very busy right now with budgets and with Kathy Lewis having gone to the county manager's office, and yet she's still responsive. So we're very appreciative of the county collaboration that we have. Nothing will fail in Douglas County. It just won't. So appreciate the question, though. Under accomplishments, successfully held the annual property tax sale online for the first time last year. It was successful. The amount of revenue that we, we generated was higher than we have ever done in an in-person. And we were also able to sell every property. Sometimes there's a property or two left over that we have to sit on for another year, which of course increases the cost that we have to sell it for because we're still accumulating taxes on it and interest and penalties. Successfully transitioned to billing out of the new property tax system, GSA. Last year was our first year of billing out of the system. We had collected in it, but we did not bill out of it. So last year was the first year that we did that. Successfully implemented a new software system to streamline property tax payments received in our office by scanning the checks and the coupons into the property tax system. This, this has streamlined the process and eased the burden on the staff. It was a very cumbersome process prior of putting all the information into an Excel spreadsheet before, before then keying every single property tax coupon and payment. This has streamlined the process, and it's, it's been a wonderful software. Created many guides and improved processes that were outdated within the office. So this has been an ongoing project. And assisted with the successful administration of the 2024 general election with the new voter registration system and the new poll paths. So full-time equivalent positions, we have the assistant treasurer, the senior accountant position, and four deputy treasurer positions, which is a total of six. As I was stating prior, we lost our, our assistant treasurer, and we gained a new one. The senior accountant was the position that was almost 30 years with the county, that retired. We have not filled that position, nor are we going to. I feel like that position should be someone that promotes into that position, but our staff is fairly new. So we are holding that position and filling it as a deputy treasurer position and then going to reevaluate. So we're holding the funding for it because we don't want to lose that position, but we are underfilling it with a deputy treasurer so that we can determine if we need it, reassess, and then we would rather hire or promote from within than hire someone from the outside to fill that position. So, so that's, that's where we're at with those positions. Right now, we have an assistant treasurer and two deputy treasurers and a senior accountant. So we are understaffed by two, but we have offered the position to two that have accepted. So we are in background. So we hope to be fully staffed by the time property tax payments go out in July. Expenditure summary, as you can see, I'm not going to go line by line. I don't feel like it's necessary unless you have questions, but we are not increasing year-over-year. We don't feel like it's necessary. There, the expenditures that we have are pretty straightforward in that, in that department. We do, however, have a supplemental request that we would like to offer. This is for security cameras that I, I have, I have, this building has always been a concern of mine as far as not having security cameras. There's no camera, the only cameras in this, in this building are on my elections equipment, not on my, not on my employees, not on the safety of my employees. It is only on the equipment that I have for elections. And my people are more valuable than my election equipment. So what I would like to see is a more robust camera system that will tie into, it's basically just additional cameras, that will tie into the existing camera system that I have. So I already have the software, I already have the annual contract. It won't increase any of that. This is a one-time expenditure just for security cameras that will be over the cash handling stations, the cash vault that we have, the hallways, and the building entrances. And it's, it's a $11,200 request.
I had a question. Turn it off. Was it you?
If you go back one page, your software cost was estimated at 99, it was 43, and it's estimated 99 again. Is there any way we can get the $11,000 from that software cost on the tenant budget to pay for those security cameras?
So the actual year-to-date is what we've spent so far, but the software is for, the rest of those monies are allocated, they're just not spent yet because we haven't gotten to the end of the year.
That's for the second half?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and that's for our software, our GSA contract that we have. The assessor's office pays half, and we pay the other half for our, our property tax
Okay, I have a question in that regard is, you're not the only person in this building. And so when you're talking about outside cameras and things of that nature, shouldn't that be, wouldn't you consider that to be a shared cost between the different elected officials that are in this, in this building with employees?
Well, because it's a one-time, we did have the conversation, you know, I, I'm not going to just put cameras up and not have the conversation with the other electors in the building. Like you said, it's not my building, it's our building. So we did, we did have the conversation with the assessor's office and with the recorder's office just to ensure that they didn't have any issues with the camera system being picked up. But as far as the costs, the costs are so nominal, and because it's a one-time fee and it's tying into an existing system that I already oversee, I, I didn't have, and because the majority of the, the cash handling aspect, I believe, is, is going to create for better audit results if we have the security of the cameras over the cash handling. So that is kind of above and beyond just the hallways and the entrances. That is actually overseeing the cash that, that belongs to the county that is taken in by the treasurer's office. So that's why I'm asking for it. I, I feel like it's such a small amount relative to the budget that to split it between the departments kind of seemed over the top. But it will be beneficial for all of the departments. Okay. Are there any further questions on this one?
Thank you.
All right, then if you give me a second, I have to switch out the slideshow. All right, Amy Bergens, Douglas County Clerk Treasurer for the record. And now I have Georgie Anne Hargis, Elections Administrator, Georgie, with me. She has been with Douglas County with me for three years?
Almost three.
Almost three years. Yeah, and she hasn't quit. In elections, you just never know. So I'm thrilled that this, this last year, she was promoted into the Elections Administrator position, and she is doing a killer job. It's a lot. Elections is a lot, and the new system is a lot, but she is asking the right questions and ensuring that our voter rolls are just stellar under this new system, so. Okay. Mission statement, we pride ourselves in providing excellent customer service as we perform vital functions for Douglas County. Department description, the Elections Office is responsible for the administration of local, state, and federal elections within the county. We oversee voter eligibility, voter registration, voter communication and outreach, candidate filing, oath and bonds, hire and train election workers, and maintain and update voting districts and precincts. workload, so in here you can see, obviously, I, I oversee the department, but Georgie is involved in the day-to-day as the election administrator. We have two election coordinators. However, one is vacant. We're actually doing interviews tomorrow to fill the other vacancy. And then in an election year, in an election year, we increase our staffing by four on-call deputy clerks. They do work full-time during, during the elections with the increased volume of phone calls and loading the cages and setting up vote centers and all the coordination that it takes for the various activities that are mandated for an election. And then we do hire over 100 election workers.
Back in the day, those election workers were volunteers. How do we make this change?
So actually, there's a bill right now in the legislature that does allow for election workers to waive compensation. So election workers are only paid, those 100 election workers are only paid $12 an hour. However, the majority of them are not doing it for the money, and they, year-over-year, ask, I don't want to get paid. And we just say, we don't have that option to not pay them as the law currently sits. So we just say, you know, if you don't want the money, donate it to a charity, but then they are still taxed on it, which is not necessarily amazing for some of them. So hopefully, that legislative bill will, or that part of that legislative bill, I should say, because there's another part of it that I'm not a huge fan of, but that part of that legislative bill, I want to, I would like to see that move forward. And I have communicated that to the Legislative Operations Committee.
Because we just have such great volunteers in our county.
We do. I agree. And the majority of the people that are working as election workers, some of them do. They're like, this is Christmas money. That's fine. I don't mind paying them. I think it's, they earn the, every single penny of that $12. However, some of them don't want to be paid. So I think we should be able to give them the option. Great question. Goals, our goals for this year, because it is, it is a non-election year, knock on wood, as long as there are no special elections. So in off-election years, we're looking to increase usability of various modules of the voter registration and election management system. Right now, we, we had the, the stock version to get us through the election. We are working through increasing to have the poll worker module and the petitions module. So we have to learn those. We have to, we can't just implement them. We have to ensure that they are correct. Looking for efficiencies within the department to streamline processes and increase trust with the public. That's a constant, that's a constant thought. I have, I have been blessed to be involved in some nationwide conversations on public trust and how we keep it. Obviously, after this last election, there, there wasn't a lot of talk about elections and integrity because their person won. But what happens in the next election when their person doesn't win? How do we continue to evolve? That's, it's true. But how do we continue to involve, evolve and, and get the trust of the public back when it comes to elections? And, and so it's a, it's an ongoing conversation. We do plan to re-precinct the county. We'll probably start that as soon as the legislature is done. We'll start the project in July. The re-precinct is not redistricting the districts. I re-district in 2021. The districts are fine. It's the precincts within those districts. We have a lot of precinct splits, and we need to get away from those splits and, and re-precinct so that each precinct has the same districts within them. So as, as most of you know, we have a lot of general improvement districts. We have the most of any county in the state, possibly in the country. And therefore, some of them overlap. You can be in multiple GIDs or multiple districts and fire districts and school district and county commission district. We want each one of those precincts to have the same districts within them. The only way to do that is to re-precinct. This was a project I hoped to take on in 2023, but did not get to. So it really is a passion of mine to get to that this year. So that will be a public process, just like redistricting will be. I will be coming before the Board of Commissioners and the School Board, and I will be involved in any of the GIDs that want me to come and present to them as well when that process starts. Increased training of full-time staff by attending SARAH and other election-specific classes and trainings. Some of you might remember that Nikki and I are both SARAH certified. That is the Certified Elections and Registration Administrator certification that is a nation, nationally recognized certification. We are working with other staff members to attend those classes and to gain that certification as well. Involvement in the legislative session as it relates to election laws. Implementation of new legislation as needed after the legislative session. And lead the mock elections across the state to increase usability of VREM systems. Douglas County has definitely taken a lead role in the implementation of this new system and of the mock elections and making them transpire across the state so that every single county is involved in those. And we can, we plan to continue to do so in, going into this year. Accomplishments. Successfully ran three countywide elections to include the first Presidential Preference Primary in February of 2024. We held four statewide mock elections to test the new Top-Down Voter Registration and Election Management System, the VREMs. So if you do the math, that was seven elections that we held last year. In August of 2024, we transitioned to the new voter registration and election management system statewide. We facilitated training of over 100 election workers on the use of the new poll pads prior to the Presidential General Election, which was no easy task. And we successfully held the Presidential General Election in the new system. I know the accomplishments are kind of all tied to the same thing, but it was so much work. And I am so proud of Douglas County for taking the lead and really making sure that the system worked correctly. Full-time equivalent positions. We have our Elections Administrator, Georgie, and the two Deputy Clerk Coordinators, one of which, as I stated, is vacant right now. We will be filling that hopefully tomorrow, or interviewing tomorrow at least. So we have a total of three in that office. I will also state that it was four, but last year when we tightened our budget, I gave up one of those positions and have not asked for it back, and I do not plan to ask for it back. So just so that you're aware, it doesn't look like I'm cutting my budgets, but I did in the previous cycle, and I think we're as tight as we can be at this point.
Ms. Bergens, before you go any further on that, and you mentioned it, but I want to emphasize it, that really, when it comes to elections, your entire staff becomes involved in the election. So it's not just these three people that are running the election. It's your entire staff. Is that...
Yes, that is correct.
The Italian is coming out of me.
It's all, it's 17 of us, plus the four on-calls that really come back year after year. They're trained staff. They understand our processes and our procedures. They understand that our, we always say in elections, our number-one goal is to not end up in the news. And I think that that came from Kathy and trickle-down, but I love it. It's so true. When you're running an election, you're, so all the staff that come back, some of the staff that come back are staff that worked as on-calls under Kathy's tenure. They're passionate about elections. They're passionate about Douglas County. So yes, it is definitely a group effort.
I would like to ask, since we're on elections, Ms. Harges, did you have any takeaways after the last, I mean, high-level look at takeaways going forward after the arduous round of elections last year?
There's, I've learned that I still have a lot to learn. But it's, especially with the legislative session, there's going to be new laws coming up that we're going to have to follow and we're going to have to implement. But it's an amazing process, and the best part is watching it come together. And it's successful, and we're not in the news. And we have the same workers that come back election after election. And so it's a group effort. We couldn't do it without all of the help that we get. And I think we even had some help from other county departments had to come in and help us do some things. And so, and with the new system that we were implementing last year as well, it was a long year. It felt like, you know, 400 days in just a few months. But we did it. And it's amazing when what you can do as a team, when you all strive for the same goal. So it was definitely an eye-opener, a lot of work, but a lot of sweat and tears, not going to lie. There were some tears, but it was successful, and that was our goal. And we worked together for the outcome that we all wanted, and that was to run a successful election with the new system that we were kind of fast-tracked.
Thank you.
I also, since you asked that question, and Georgie alluded to it, the other departments, there's no way, even with the staff that I have, that an election could successfully be run in a county like this without the other departments. And I want to highlight too, just because I have the microphone, IT, this last year, IT has just so, has been so vital to elections, to the Clerk Treasurer's Office in general. But under the direction of peace, I have seen, and Mike, Avila, I have seen just a complete 180 of services provided to the county departments. They are behind the scenes. Most people don't know what they do, but when you need them, they are there, especially in elections using a new system this year that was cloud-based software that needed IT support. I am not IT. I needed their support to be able to do this, and they held our hand and really walked us through things we would have never thought about on our own. So the after-action, talking through it, they were so vital. And then, of course, community services are, they're so great, giving up a room in the community center, and then on Election Day, all the other facilities that we use that are community services facilities. And the fact that I was worried about this new system, and I vocalized that I was worried about the new system in a meeting just with IT. And I didn't even have a chance to think about it. And IT and Community Services had found me an office. I'm going to get emotional again. That's so crazy. Seriously, Douglas County's amazing. They had found me an office and set it up so that I could dock if anything was to go wrong in the Community Services Building, so I could stay close by and have what I, the resources I needed. They did that without me asking. They just did it. They knew that I was stressed. They knew that we were under the gun, and they just were troubleshooting without my knowledge. So yes, the other offices, I love Douglas County. I will always rave about Douglas County. We have some of the best people. So I would be remiss if I didn't talk about those two departments in particular. So I'm going to move on to my budget for the Elections Office. As you can see, we're minimal increase again, 1.4%. Last year was rough because the 23-24 budget, we had two elections that we ran. That was the Presidential Preference Primary and the June Primary. And then last year was just the general election, the Presidential General Election was in this budget that we're finishing up right now. And so next year, we will have the June Primary. So this budget, every single budget touches an election, the way that they fall. So you'll either have the June or the November General, depending upon which cycle you fall in. This budget will touch the, it will encompass the June 2026 primary midterm election. So it is budgeted to run an election. There is a 1.4% increase, something that I had budgeted prior but didn't actually use the funds for. So those funds this year will go back into the general fund, but I allocated the money again, is the inter-local agreement with the state for the new VREM system. The promise on that unfunded mandate from the state was that it would not significantly increase how much we pay for our voter registration system. However, we currently pay $7,500 a year for the system that we were previously using. The inter-local agreement, which I am finalizing right now and will be bringing before you probably in the next month, is increasing it to $51,000 a year. That is being budgeted for. So it was budgeted for previously at a lower amount, but the final numbers that we are getting from the Secretary of State's Office is $51,000 a year. And that will be, I think that is allocated under professional services, if I'm not mistaken. It might be under software. I apologize that I don't know that off the top of my head. Yeah, I think it's under software. Is that correct? Yes. Okay. Thank you. I'm like, someone from financial, no, thank you. So that contract will be coming before you, and I hope to be able to put it on the administrative calendar because I feel like the public needs to be aware of what unfunded mandates are doing to the counties. So, but that is allocated for here in this. We don't really have an option about paying that.
I want to preface this question by indicating that four years ago, in my very first budget presentation by staff, we got to this budget, and there's a line item here, 101-184-532.032, clothing, non-uniform. And four years ago, it was less than $78, but I questioned that why we are providing clothing that is non-uniform to our employees. Okay? I asked that question. And about this time on a Tuesday, an individual that was sitting in this audience went to the Good Governance Group and said, oh my God, Commissioner Gardner is being so nitpicky. He's questioning the expense of less than $50 on clothing, non-uniform, and beat me up over that. And my counter to that was, you're right. I look at these budgets to know where, try to, you know, look for anomalies or things that are out of whack. And I would suggest maybe if commissioners, I don't want to point any fingers, but perhaps, you know, we had $1 million in tires that didn't fit any vehicle in our fleet over a number of years. So, but my question would be then, okay, so we budgeted, we budgeted $503 in this last budget. You spent 78. And first of all, I would like you to explain to the public, I know what it is, okay? And I'm sure you know what it is. And if you would explain to the public what clothing, non-uniform is, because it's an important thing. I do agree that it's an important thing. But if you only spent $578 and you budgeted $503, and I know it's pennies, pennies in the whole scheme of things, but now you're asking for another $503 in the next cycle when you only spent $78. So, and we only have one election to run rather than three, so, or a couple instead of three. So...
Clothing, non-uniform is, my staff is not, they do not have to wear a uniform. However, we do like to provide shirts to them that they can wear during the election so that they are identifiable. That's what those monies are for. So it's not a uniform, but it is a shirt that identifies them as having work or working for the Clerk Treasurer's Office.
You know, I could give you some of my campaign shirts to give to the workers if you wanted.
That. I appreciate your thinking outside the box. We will discuss later.
I think that would be an ethics violation. I think that would be campaigning within 100 feet of the, you know, of the site, right? Okay. So I think that's illegal, but again...
But let me explain why only $78 was spent.
And by the way, I think it's very important, okay? I think it's very important that your staff and perhaps even our election workers be identified in that manner. So...
So with that, I will say that last year, I applied for and received a grant through the Center for Civic Tech, $50,000. They granted us all $50,000. With that $50,000, I completely revamped the tally room downstairs. We were using the white folding tables as desks, and the computers were on them. We were able to redo that whole room. We redid some desks and office furniture. We got new sign holders and equipment for out at every single vote center. We spent every single dollar of that $50,000, because if I get free money, I'm going to spend it. We also bought shirts, uniform shirts, that, or non-uniform election shirts. And we used all, we used money from that, and we spilled over into our budget by $78. That's why I spent $78. The rest of the money came out of our grant. So yes, I would like to have that funded because I can't guarantee that I will get another grant for $50,000. But if I do, I will not spend that money next year either.
Good answer.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, it's all kind of tongue-in-cheek, but still, you know, the public, you know...
Yeah. Every penny counts. We know that in our personal finances, and I don't think that the county budget should be looked at any differently. You know, if I wouldn't spend it in my personal budget because I don't have the money, I shouldn't be spending it with taxpayer money out of there. So with that, I do have one supplemental request, and I would like to just go over this supplemental request.
Just a quick question before?
Yeah, absolutely.
If you go back to the, your printing and binding is dropped significantly, but the postage has gone up. At the same time, it seems like those two are coordinated. Is there something that I'm missing between the two of those and how you're, what's happening that the printing and binding is dropping so much?
So the printing and binding has been outsourced to a vendor and therefore has moved into another, into professional services or into one of the other line items. So we're not doing it in-house. However, we still have to pay the postage costs. So the postage costs year-over-year, of course, are going to increase because, first of all, we're doing all mail ballots, but then also just the costs through the post office have increased year-over-year. So the postage costs are going to continue to rise every year. However, the printing and binding has decreased due to reallocating it from printing and binding into basically a vendor doing it for us.
Right, yeah, there's a net benefit there, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's more movement than it is...
But it's going that much? I mean, the stamp costs that much now? It's crazy.
Well, it's not just sending something out. It's that election mail cannot be forwarded and therefore is returned to us as undeliverable. That's a whole nother expense that is greater than the cost of an actual stamp. So election mail is very expensive. Not having, having people not update their information with us is very expensive because it's a non-election year. People aren't thinking about it, but if they move or they're, you know, even down the street, or put their mail on hold, anything like that, and we are not aware, and we mail them something and it comes back to us, we're paying double the fee of just mailing something. Another unfunded mandate, I might add. So supplemental requests. We have one supplemental request, and I will preface this with, I have been wanting this software for the, I wanted to ask for these funds prior to the 2024 election cycle, however, because we were tightening our fiscal budget. I did not ask for it. I know that we are still tightening our fiscal budget, and I do understand that. However, we are getting to the point where we're going to need to start thinking about our election equipment. We have had it since 2017. That is when it was purchased with grant funding through the Secretary, or through the legislature. I am hopeful that this is, this request is going to be funded through this legislative session. However, we don't know that that's going to happen. Conversations that I've had with the Secretary of State's Office, they're not sure that it's going to happen. So I am requesting the funds through the county, and if the legislature comes up with the money, or if the legislature partially funds it or half-funds it, then I will move forward then. I will not move forward until the legislature says there is no money for this. We will not be allocating it if you approve this, if that makes sense. I will not spend the county's money before I spend state money. But this is for, this is for voting equipment to go with existing voting equipment. It's an add-on. It's called a ballot marking device, BMD. It's, it will replace the printers that we have right now that go with the in-person voting equipment. What these are, actual printers that print a ballot, an actual ballot. So once you make your decision on the voting machine, it will print the actual ballot. You will pick up the piece of paper that looks like, it looks like a ballot that you received in the mail, like a paper ballot. It will have who you selected on the machine already marked on that ballot for you. who you selected on the machine already marked on that ballot for you. You will review it, ensure that it's correct, and on your way out of the vote center, there will be machine, portable machines that you will scan it into, and it will record your vote right then and there, and then it keeps the paper as an audit trail. So, this is what majority of the counties, I think five counties have already transitioned to this. The smaller counties, where it's less expensive because they have less voting equipment, have transitioned to this. Clark County is in the process of transitioning to it. I think that they used them at some of their vote centers during the general election, and the rest of us are kind of watching for funding, because funding is the hardest part.
So, right now, as I recall, because I went and voted, because I wanted to experience the actual voting machine for this moment. But we have that. We just don't tear it off and take it with us somewhere. But there's a little reading machine where you see your printed ballot.
Yes. That's called a VVPAT. It's a voter-verified printed audit trail, VVPAT. It does mark, like, it tells you who you selected, and it lights up, and you review it, and then you hit the button to say, yes, it's right, or no, it's not, and on the machine. I will tell you, there's a lot of confusion with that. There's what people think are a QR code at the end. They feel like they should take their phone out and scan it. You can't have a phone out in the vote center. It is not a QR code that scans to like who you voted for. That is for us internally. When we do our audit after the fact, we do use that, but it is not for the voter themselves. The voter themselves wants to physically, or wants to physically touch it. They, where's my receipt? What do I take with me? This is, this has improved and increased voter trust with this system. So, and the, like I said, the system, we have those printers. You can, you can update software in like the big iPads that we vote on. You can update the software on those, and you can keep those up to date. The printers, not so much. The printers have functionalities inside the turning wheels and stuff that start to fail over time. So, we're hoping that we won't, we won't have to replace any of the big equipment for a long time, but the printers themselves will have to be replaced. And this is mitigating failure of those, that system.
So, are they starting to fail already?
We always have a couple that we have to take down during an election cycle, and it never looks good when you're taking down election equipment. It's a safe process. We put a new one up. We do have a handful of extras in the county. So, yes, during every election, there are times when we have to take them down. Just the, we take the paper out. It's a secure and safe process. I hate to, you know, I hate to talk about it, but yes, it does happen where we have to take those down, because they are, they do have a failure rate, as any printer would. I can't say that that won't happen, you know, with any printer, but yes.
Right. So, if that happens, you fix it, you reprint, you show the voter, and they're off on their way?
With the, with the VVPAT that we have right now?
Yeah.
So, they typically don't fail in the middle of a transaction.
Okay.
It's typically after the fact. It won't, it won't allow the person to vote, or something to that effect. It doesn't typically happen during a transaction. So, the point is, it never looks good when you're in the middle of a vote center and you're working on equipment. We try really hard not to work on equipment during an election.
I'm just trying to get a feel for how, the extent of the problem.
It's not, it's not a problem at this point. I'm trying to mitigate a problem in the future. It's, right now, after an election, we send away, you know, 10, 15 of them, or the, a company comes to us and, you know, revamps them, puts new wheels in, whatever needs to be, and we clean them before the election to ensure that they're, you know, printer ink and stuff. We clean them and stuff, trying to mitigate them. So, it's not, it's not a huge concern. There's always a failure rate with any type of printing equipment. However, I am, I am looking forward to eventually having this new system in place.
And going into that a little bit, Ms. Bergens, myself, obviously, when you look at the supplemental budget request, this is a heavy lift, you know, for us right now. And is this, so the state's not mandating this currently?
Not currently.
Not currently. And do you anticipate them mandating this?
I do feel like there are going to be changes that are coming down from the federal level, that are going to impact our voting equipment. We don't have full transparency on what that's going to look like right now, and there's been cuts at the federal level on budgets on some of the agencies that oversee elections. So, I'm not sure how fast they're going to be able to now get us the, basically, we're waiting for those agencies to give us the standards by which the voting equipment has to meet at a federal level, and then the states have to comply. We don't know what that's going to look like. Therefore, we can't say that our voting equipment is going to meet those standards.
See, I would think that ongoing cost 2,900 would be very doable, but the 184 is problematic, obviously. And so, and I would hope that Mr. Aguilar will indicate that the state needs to fund that if they're going to mandate it upon the counties. So...
If it becomes a mandate, I can, I, the, I'm sure that they would try and find the funding. That is how they funded the equipment in the first place in 2017.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I think we went through the questions, but just opening it back up before...
I think we're good. Thank you, Ms. Bergens. Thank you, Ms. Harges.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now adjourn for a lunch break, and maybe we should plan to return at 1:15? 1:30? Okay. We will plan to be, return at 1:30. And just for the information of the public, the board members will be in a non-meeting regarding negotiations. So, if it looks like we're all going in a closed room, it's because we are. Thanks.
I just had to talk about those.
All right, it is 1:30 and we'll reconvene our budget workshop. We are happy to have with us Phil Ricker, John Urb, and Jeff Macdonnell, and we are here to talk Public Works.
Commissioner Hills and Board, Phil Ricker, Director of Public Works for the record. Thank you. I know predominantly you've been listening to presentations on general fund. The next presentation here with the road is going to be on the Road Operating Fund and the Tahoe Douglas Transportation District Fund, which are both special revenue funds. And then the last one will be the Regional Transportation Committee Commission or Regional Transformation Transportation, which is a capital project fund. So with that, I'm going to open it up to John to discuss presentation, and in the spirit of March Madness, I will add color commentary. He will be the broadcaster here.
For the record, John Urb, Douglas County Public Works. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. As Phil had mentioned, I'm here to talk about all the three different road funds, Road Operating Fund 232, the Tahoe Douglas Transportation District Fund 236, and the Regional Transportation Fund 430. I have a pretty general mission statement, is safe roads for all, and that's our goal. Come down to it, it's all about public safety when you talk about roads and road maintenance and road improvements and new roads. Department description, we're currently on, I'll talk about 232 first. It's the road operating. This is the internal maintenance that the county does with county staff. The county staff maintains roads through different activities such as snow plowing, grading gravel roads, street sign maintenance, street sweeping, striping, traffic signal, and streetlight repairs, and other operations such as crack sealing, pothole maintenance, and roadside ditches. The Tahoe Douglas Transportation District is pretty much the same thing. We maintain the roads up at the lake and for other users and participants, and contribute to the Tahoe Douglas MPO, Tahoe Douglas, forgetting, TD, not TD, TD, Tahoe Transportation, TTD, Tahoe Transportation District, getting a little tongue tied there. Performance measures and workload indicators for 232, it's just mainly maintaining the pavement, cleaning the roadside ditches, grading roads, as I said, refreshing the striping every spring. And we operate all the signals within Douglas County, even if they're owned by Nevada Department of Transportation, we do the operation and maintenance on those. That operation of signals is contracted out to Carson City Public Works. They have the specialized trucks and the specific crews that have all the proper training and certifications to work on the signals. And then up at Tahoe, we do pavement preservation lifecycle replacement program, and we help with the transportation plans with TRPA and the agencies up there. Goals and accomplishments, we're working on purchasing of two new dump trucks with snow piles and sander attachments. Our fleet that we currently have are pretty old. Luckily, this winter was pretty easy on the fleet. We didn't do a lot of snow plowing down in the valley. Last two years, we did a lot. So this was a nice year for the crew. They were able to do, focus on other items in the county during the winter. So accomplishments, I don't have all like the little different spots we worked on in the county, but we, the road crew did quite a bit of work through the summer. There was some streets in Johnson Lane and in Rune Stroff that we did some overlays on, in-house overlays. And then in the fall, we did some crack sealing to prepare for next year's chip seals and slurry seals. And then just all the general maintenance that people don't actually see all the time. And that's a lot of mowing on the roadside shoulders, grading of the shoulders. I have crews, when we get calls from dispatch, they go out and pick up dead deer, and that happens more often than you would think in Douglas County. So with that, all the items that the crew works on, and I got a great crew, I want to give a shout out for them, they work hard, and they're always busy, and everything they do is for the public and public safety, so.
Can we pause on that, just for one point I wanted to comment on, maintaining relationships with residents, demands. I do think, I really think that was a great way to phrase that, because you do have, and we know, because we hear it, a lot of people saying, where's the county to fix my road? And there's a lot of reasons why the county's not there fixing their road, and yet you and your people stay calm and pleasant and informative, and I just really, I think that really truly is an accomplishment. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our phone does ring a lot, people want to know, and that's how we find out about certain things as well, because we're not out there driving every road every day. Sometimes things just pop over, pop up through the week, and it's with the public calling us that we find out about a lot of things. You're right, it takes a lot of time. Phil has some great admin office staff that have really taken some pressure off of me on phone calls, and they do a wonderful job, so. We try to respond as much as we can, sometimes we can't, but we do, do our best.
Phil Ricker for the record, John's being modest here, not only does the staff, admin staff assist in answering questions and calls from the public, but John, it's one of the things I admire about him is his promptness in responding to residents. They may not like the answer, but they're always provided with an answer. The other thing I wanted to mention on this slide in terms of accomplishments is the road crew this past season, until late last season and this season, was really focused on rehabilitation of roads that were damaged during the flood. So a lot of the FEMA work that was, basically all of the FEMA work that was done along the roadsides and road areas in the county were performed by the crew as part of their daily functions.
Thank you, Phil, and we're hoping to get refunded on all that work, so fingers crossed on that.
I think I talked about that yesterday, as a matter of fact. We're hoping we get reimbursed.
Yes, we're hoping. Organizational chart, organization chart, on the right is Transportation Engineering Manager, which is myself. Underneath me, I have a Civil Engineer that assists me in the engineering, and then there is a Road Maintenance Coordinator, three seniors, two that are Road Maintenance Operator seniors, one that does specifically sign maintenance, and that position is currently vacant, and then four road operators, and we have one vacancy in there. It's been a challenge to fill these positions. We do require a commercial driver's license, because they do drive large pieces of equipment, trucks hauling gravel or snow plowing, and so it's been a challenge to fill these positions to get good recruits to fill them. On the 232 revenue side, we have the room tax for the East Fork District, so in the valley, we get a portion of that. There's state gas tax, which is, we get four different levels of the state gas tax, and that's based on our public road miles. There's the 1 cent option, the 2.35 cent tax, the 1.7 cent tax, and the 1.25 cent tax. So with all that, we do get money, it's not a lot, but it's, what's the next page?
Mr. Urb, could I ask you to give us a little bit deeper explanation into what exactly those taxes are? So the, I'm looking at it, the county option, what is the county option?
It's a 1.01% tax from the state gas tax, not the county gas tax. So it's an NRS optional tax that the county can request. I don't know how the formula works or how it comes, it's distributed to us through Department of Motor Vehicles.
Is that the only county, is that the only thing?
No, then there's the other, the other three taxes, gasoline tax.
No, I know that, but it's, so this is a county option that we can opt in according to NRS, and so we've done that. Is there other opportunities to opt in that we're not taking advantage of?
There are no.
No, okay.
These are strictly.
So this point, 2.35 cents, is that right?
Yes, so every year for the 2.35, the 1.75, and the 1.25, we turn in road miles, public road miles that the county maintains to NDOT. Then there is a, if you look at the NRS section, it's pretty convoluted, there is a whole section in the RNS on how that is formulated based on population, road miles, and the amount of state gas tax our county generates, that we get a portion of that.
So obviously, when we're looking at these amounts, that raises some red flags to me. When I look at a 25 budget of, for instance, the 2.35, 405,000, and yet we have only three months left in this year, and we're only halfway there.
They are a quarter of the year behind, I think Carolyn's probably going to come up here and talk about that. We don't, they're always a quarter behind us.
They're always a quarter, so that's basically six months, not nine months.
That is correct.
Okay, and that would be true of the other two as well?
That is correct.
Okay, because it's a little bit hard to, you know, it's, it does register red flags if we're nine months in and we're only half those taxes, so.
Is that it? Carolyn Cheffo for the record, we're two, we would be two months behind, because it's, the month ends, they have a month to report, and then a month that the state collects all that and sends it to us. So we're usually two months behind on the revenue.
Okay, so we are anticipating to be on budget of the, basically 950,000, is that, that we have budgeted in for the '25 fiscal year?
We should be close to it, yeah.
Close to.
Actually, I was looking at it yesterday, I think, and we are running a little bit ahead of prior year, so, yeah, we should, we should be pretty close.
And this is based on the number of miles that we maintain within our county, is that, is that what you said? Did I understand that correctly?
It's based on the number of miles, I believe, population, and as well as the amount of gas sold in the county.
So it has to do with the sale of gas as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The number of gallons, yeah.
And of course, the problem with that, of course, is that it, we're not seeing huge gains in amount of gas.
No, all the gas taxes have been relatively flat, our highest year was 2018. We're getting close to getting back to that, but we have yet to reach the 2018 dollar amount.
Right, so as, as this levels off, obviously, as cars get more fuel efficient, then that means they buy less gas, and as more people move to electric vehicles, we get less gas. So two big factors there in basically demonstrating that our amount of revenue here is very flat, very flat, yet the cost of repairs and maintenance, as I'm sure we're going to see, is escalating at an extent, right? So I just, you know, I say these because I want the public to understand.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Transfer in, we do have 100,000 that's transferred in, and that's transferred in from the RTC funds, so that we can keep ahead of just the general maintenance, and it also allows us to do the crack sealing prior to the pavement preservation projects that are Expenses, the snow removal has been right around 100,000 a year. We had some years in the past that exceeded that amount, and we had to come to the board, but the last couple of years, we've been staying right in that range. We have an increase in printing and binding, and that's just the use that I use for the office copier. Utilities have gone up. Like I said, we pay for all the utilities of all the signals, and then share utility costs at the public yard. And so the utility costs have increased with the increase in rates. Traffic light.
I asked you because you skipped over that. What is, how do you have $0 for maintenance of the roads?
That is a different line item, I'm not exactly sure, that's not the road maintenance part of the, of what we do. I can get back to you, but it's not the actual maintenance of the road.
Yeah, it's okay. All right, well, I'm assuming you're going to get to that at some point.
Maintenance of traffic light. So we have a contract around $100,000, it is 100, do not exceed of $100,000 with Carson City Public Works to maintain our traffic signal. We've been doing some upgrades over the past year, couple of years. As you recall, the power went out a couple of weeks ago, and a lot of people made note that the signals did not go out. We did some improvements since NV Energy was going to announce, had announced they were going to start doing these public outages for fire safety, and so we spent some money, and NDOT contributed, to put battery backups in all the signals within Douglas County. So when the power goes out, the traffic keeps moving. And then the other, other big cost we put in is, we want to be able to remote into the signals to see if, when they're, when we get a call from the public that a signal's not operating correctly, the technicians now can get on their laptops and call in. We put what's called cradle points in all the signals in Douglas County, which is basically a cell phone type receiver in the signal control box, and we can, they can connect into each signal and look at any conflicts that they're having, any equipment that's down. So in the long run, that's going to save us on maintenance costs of the signals. A lot of this stuff is going to be reimbursable by NDOT. I'm working on getting invoices to them, I hope to get money back on a lot of those things, because they are owned by NDOT but maintained by us.
The only other, Phil Ricker for the record, one of the other things I want to point out on this slide is just a vehicle maintenance line item, 52116. As John mentioned earlier, one of the things is we're procuring new equipment or new dump trucks, but it is costly to maintain the old fleet that we have. It's not considered motor, those vehicles are not considered motor pool, they're owned by the Road Operating Fund, so we actually pay fleet services on a job-by-job or work-order type basis for the maintenance of all that heavy equipment and road equipment.
There's an increase in risk management, that's the cost of insurance going up. We do have items that are insured throughout the county. Not all infrastructure is insured, but there are some guardrails on Waterloo Lane. We do get a lot of hit and runs, that affects our insurance rates. We do try to get as much of those captured. We hope when people hit them that they turn themselves in, doesn't always happen, but we do get some good Samaritans that will call in and tell us that they've hit an item, and we can get it covered through their insurance instead of ours. So other maintenance and supplies, that's where most of our funds, our big items go to, that would be purchase of materials, whether it's pavement materials, striping, and pothole material in the wintertime, and so that's our big item, and that costs, like Commissioner Gardner was saying, price of asphalt to do repairs on the road, overlays, patches, has gone in, in 2016, I was paying $62 a ton, I'm up to $137 a ton, so it's more than double.
So that's under maintenance supplies?
Major repair and maintenance, other maintenance.
Other maintenance supplies, yeah, because it seems to me that should be under the maintenance, other repair and maintenance, but, so the, the cost to lay the asphalt and everything else would be major repair and maintenance, and it's only $1,000?
It's, well, in the tentative budget, we have 245,000 in there, and I'm requesting 74,000 more.
That's under supplies. I don't suppose, I don't think you mean the workers would be considered supplies.
Well, this is in-house work, so that's under. Well, this is in-house work, so our, our, that's under, um, solaredies and budgets. So, um, okay. So that's all another line item, but other, when we purchase material, it all goes into other maintenance and supplies. And that would be the asphalt, uh, sand first, uh, during the snowplow season, um, shoulder material, uh, pavement. And that's what goes into there, so.
Yeah. Um, Phil Ritter, Director of Public Works for the Record. We're on the, the 232 fund, which is Road Operating, and this is the internal, essentially internally controlled, uh, maintenance of the roads and things of that. I think what you're going to be looking at later is when we get into the Regional Transportation Fund, which is where we do, uh, the contracts or the capital improvement and major repair and maintenance on all the collector roads, which, which I think alludes to your point about the, the chip seals and the, and the slurry seals. That's not part of this budget.
You did ask about major repair or maintenance. That would be if we had funds to have an outside contractor to come in and do, uh, road maintenance work. Uh, in the past, there's been times during major storm events where we've had to hire other contractors to come in and assist the county. And that's where it would come out of. And we would usually do a budget augmentation, uh, to put funds in there.
So, I mean, as I'm looking at this, your bottom line is, uh, an increase, uh, somehow we lost it, at 96,000, yet most of that is in 74,000 in the increase in, uh, maintenance supplies. So that's, once again, I just, I'm kind of, I guess I'm beating a dead horse here, but that's, that's, that's the cost of it. So, yeah.
Yeah. The cost has gone up over 50%, especially for items like asphalt. But, um, the other issue we're having is the, the location of materials, uh, such as asphalt is quite a, quite a ways away. There's the Brunswick Canyon in Carson that produces asphalt. And we do get as much as we can from there, but they're not always, uh, making material. There's, uh, they won't open the plant until there's a certain amount of orders. We'll never as, as a county meet that. So there's been times we've had to drive to Sparks, to Granits and, and get several truckloads. And all that, that does is slow down our production. We're not getting as much done in the same time period as we used to when we were able to just go to Bing's and pick up asphalt from them. So, um, a lot's happened in the last 10 years in road maintenance and, and the amount that we can get done. You know, you're right. Inflation has really affected it the most, though. Pardon? Moving on to the 236 fund. This is the, uh, one cent room tax from Lake Tahoe. It produces about 1.3 million dollars. So go to the next, uh, and, uh, with that, we do, uh, there are some snow plowing that, uh, we, we contribute to the snow plowing contract up at the lake, uh, for that. Uh, I do contract that out at the lake. Uh, just, I don't have enough crew or equipment to do both the valley and the lake. So we can't contract that out because it's, you know, they're there. Uh, they're, they don't have to mobilize. Uh, we, they get on it right away. The other, uh, item that goes to the, 50,000 a year goes to the MPO, Tahoe Transportation District, uh, for their bus services up at the lake. Uh, the membership, the $12,000 membership, uh, that's a stormwater, uh, membership, uh, for the casino corridor that we pay into as well as, uh, the casinos and other entities at the lake. So those are the major costs. And then, uh, the room tax distribution, I think Phil has that, um, figured out.
Yeah. Uh, Phil Ritter, Director of Public Works for the Record. Yeah. On the room tax distribution, uh, which is listed here at 1.9 million dollars, um, that is a reprogramming of the, I'll call it reprogramming of the South Shore reserves, uh, when there was, um, when NDOT was looking at doing the South Shore revitalization project, which they have now canceled. We had been putting aside reserves to, uh, support that project and that effort. Those, those reserves now are here, um, in, shown in this line item, um, for future allocation. It's, uh, essentially it's for, um, um, uh, for, for future projects essentially. Um, as I mentioned before, this is a special revenue fund. So, uh, unlike the Capital Project Fund, the RTC Fund, um, and some of the enterprise ones, um, within, within a budget year, uh, you are not allowed to move money out of reserves. Uh, there's only, there's specific timing, uh, elements or issues with that to, to comply with NRS and NRS requirements. So, uh, it's been decided here to program this into this line item, um, to give flexibility to this board in the future, in this next coming fiscal year, for any unanticipated projects and to support needs, um, that this revenue is, it would be available for.
And that's just at the lake, right? It can't be used out?
Just at the, correct. That is just at the lake.
Uh, we do have a future capital improvement project at the lake. Lake Parkway, both the east side and the west sides, uh, as part of the, some people call it the loop road. It's in need of being reconstructed. Most likely a mill and fill. Uh, that's going to require ADA improvements, uh, bike lane improvements, uh, all the improvements to meet the, um, the grand plan of, of the transportation up there for Lake Tahoe with, uh, TRPA. So, um, so we're putting money into reserves for that.
I just want to point out that the, um, we've, in prior fiscal years, we've, um, accumulated $2 million in reserves for that project. This fiscal year, in this budget, we're reserving another million, um, six, or, uh, oh six. And, uh, there still is another 1.06 to be funded in fiscal year 2027 in that budget to get us to the total project budget of the 4.12 million.
So I imagine you have to be careful on the timing of that, right? Cause you have the century classic, American century classic. You've got a short summer, right? I'm, so I imagine that's tricky, that Lake Parkway work.
Uh, yeah. Any, any work at the Lake Tahoe seems to be tricky. There'll be a lot. There'll be a lot of work involved with the casinos, the event center, um, special events. Yeah. It's, but it's needed and, and it'll, once done, we'll be out of there for quite a while.
And I'm assuming we've been saving for this for a while. Are we going to be chasing inflation to some extent? Are we pretty solid on that? Four million?
Um, we're, we're pretty solid on getting to the four million. We, we started the reserve two years ago, so we're taking about a million out a year for that. Is that your question?
Just that we, is that $4 million estimate from before still going to hold or are we chasing that?
No, I, it's been increased for inflation. Based on, um, the, uh, recent project on Kell Drive. So I've adjusted the estimate based on that. Regional Transportation Commission Fund, RTC, uh, Fund 430, uh, mission statement, same, uh, safe roads for all. As Phil pointed out earlier, this is a capital improvement, uh, fund. The description, it's responsible for the design, facilitation, administration and road construction, um, through the capital improvement projects. It includes reconstruction of existing roads, construction of new roads and maintaining engineering standards for all modes of, uh, transportation. Affirmance measure is, is meet the project needs and our transportation plan. Meet the development agreements as, uh, we're trying to do on, on certain projects and, adhere to the master plan, as I said before. Our goal is to, to construct, uh, Mueller Parkway. Even though on Vista Grande, uh, RTC funds are not being used, RTC will facilitate that project. We do have a road pavement preservation program. So, uh, what that is, is the chip seal and slurry seal, um, to, um, extend the life of past capital improvement projects that we've had and, uh, other assets within the county, whether it was built by the developers or the county. Uh, we do, um, we do about 700,000 a year. I, I, I do want to up that program a little bit, um, to, um, capture a few more road miles on that. Improve congestion and improve safety and, um, all, all the projects is a result of safer roads for everyone. Uh, accomplishments this year were the chip and slurry seal. RTC also contributed to a new survey for the pavement condition. So, uh, we use a program called Paver. It ranks the, um, pavement condition from zero to 100, 100 being a brand new roadway. And so we just had the new survey done and we did it in, uh, coordination, uh, with Campo. Uh, Campo paid for the road sections, uh, in the north county that are in, in the Campo boundary. And then RTC picked up the rest of the county on that. And then the same with the travel demand model. That's a planning tool, um, that we use, uh, in, in traffic engineering. It's kind of a crystal ball. It looks at the future based on land use of what, what the traffic's going to be like in, in 30 years. And so that tool we use to be able to, uh, have consultants of developers, um, their consultants are required to do traffic studies. That comes through me. Uh, they use those future numbers and we can determine, uh, what improvements they need to do and what their contribution rates are. Uh, so that was done, uh, through a collaboration of community development and, and RTC. Uh, the flow chart's the same on RTC, although the road maintenance guys are not paid through RTC, uh, the civil, there is allocation for the civil engineer, uh, underneath me, uh, through the RTC funds. Revenue for RTC, uh, we have to add Valerum and property tax. It's, uh, 1.8, tentative for 2026, about 1.8 million dollars. It's not a lot. If you look at your, uh, if you look at your tax bill, um, I get the phone call all the time, how come you haven't fixed our roads? We pay taxes. But if you look at your tax, I would say the average tax for roads per parcel or home is anywhere from $40 to $60 per year. So it's not a lot of money. The newer multimillion dollar homes may be up to 180 to 240. So, um, it's on your assessed value. So it's, it's not a lot. And we, um, we could use more, but I know it can't come out of that. So, uh, the other, uh, we do get construction tax, um, for residential construction. What is it? Shoot.
That road residential construction tax, is that on, on new construction? Is that what that is?
Yeah. It's per permit and I'm, wanna say it's $5,000 per home. And then on the commercial, it's $50 per square foot. Uh, when we have some big, big commercial projects going, like when Starbucks went in and stuff, it, it, it adds up, um, when they got a million square feet. But we don't have a lot of commercial growth going on at this time. And then, um, we have the county gasoline tax. And that's the nine cent gas tax that we have. It generates about 1.8 million dollars. So in total, um, we, we get about 4.5 million dollars in revenue for RTC for capital improvement projects. Expenses, uh, the largest expense would be re, major repair and maintenance. Uh, that goes, um, to projects, uh, currently right now, um, it's, we just have the, uh, the preservation project, pavement preservation project, which is the slurry and chip seals. Uh, we do about 700,000, uh, dollars a year on that. I want to increase it to 80,000, uh, to address, um, some of the cracks. If we can get in there earlier and do some crack sealing, it's about, to, for the Mastic, the new crack seal material that works on big cracks before we go in there and slurry them, it's to rent the machine and get a truckload, it's about $80,000. So we want to get that taken care of, um, before we do the slips and jerk, slips and chips and slurries.
Phil Ritter, Director of Public Works for the Record. While we don't get into Swiss, the product specific type information here, what I did want to point out, and, and we'll talk about this in more detail, I think, at the April, the, uh, upcoming April 30th meeting. But that is that, um, right now, the cost to do a slurry seal on a road, um, an average width, uh, in this county is around 50 to 55,000 dollars per mile. So when you look at a $700,000 budget to do, um, uh, road maintenance or preservation, it allows us to do roughly 11 to maybe 12 miles, uh, every year, uh, which is not a lot when you consider the number of miles in this county.
That said, how do you prioritize what 11 miles out of the 200 miles get done?
Uh, that's the pavement condition index. So when we have the survey, it ranks the roads. So anything above a 60, we want to preserve. So when you do a slurry or chip seal, it adds another seven years of life to that pavement. And if it's below a 60, um, it, it's not going to do a lot for the road. It'll make it look pretty for a while, but it doesn't add any life to it. So through our pavement preservation program, uh, the paving, the micropaver program, um, that's how we kind of rank, rank the roads on which ones are going to get the slurry or chip seals. And then we try to concentrate it in an area. Uh, if you have a contractor running from one end of the valley to the other, it's going to increase your price. So we try to group all the, the roads in one area, one year, and then we move to another area the next year and so on. So, uh, this last year, we were in the Chambersfield, uh, off of Kimerling. We did Kimerling, Tillman, uh, that area. We did have to jump down to, um, south county for a couple of roads down there, but it's hard to group any roads down there because there's not a lot of county maintained roads down there. So we did a few roads down there, but, um, if that answers your question.
Yeah, that's helpful because it's not necessarily the worst road. It's the one that's still worth maintaining, right? I mean, for lack of a better phrase, I guess.
So a new road, let's say Jack's Valley Road, uh, was done in 2015 or 16. It's due for a slurry seal. That's a very wide road. It has six foot bike lanes, uh, 12 foot lanes. So it's a very wide, it's, it's due for a chip seal or slurry seal. That road alone's going to eat up to $700,000. And some people will, you know, they'll call and, well, that road's new. Why are you? Why are you redoing it already? A chip seal on it?" Because that's the time period. The sun is very damaging to the surface of the road, and you want to do it every five to seven years. And we're due for chip or slurry on all the new roads that we've done in the past 10 years. We, Toller was the first road that got rebuilt when I came in. We've done our chip seal on that one. So we're starting to get to those newer roads. Some people don't see the need to do it, but because they feel like the road's smooth and it's in good shape. But there is a method behind it to extend that pavement life.
Yeah, especially, Phil Rittger, for the record, especially when you consider that preservation is at about $50,000, $60,000 a mile. Reconstruction is, if it's a rural standard road, meaning no curb and gutter, is probably about 1.3 million right now per mile. And if you're doing carbon gutter, you're up to over $2 million per mile. So the ability to preserve the existing good roads and maintain them for a much longer period of time far outweighs the idea of just letting them deteriorate and then going back and try to rebuild them all at once. The only other thing I wanted to point out on this slide here is the line item called Transfers Out, the $966,000. That is the bond payment. When John was talking about the roads that had been reconstructed, that was, those roads are reconstructed by bonding in 2016. That is a 20-year bond, so that's set to expire. That line item, about $1 million a year, comes out of this one to pay the bond payments, and that will continue through roughly 2036.
So regional transportation capital projects that are due in the future, Mueller Parkway and full construction of that, it's about $16 million. We got a Johnson Lane reconstruction that is going to be funded mainly by Campo funds that are distributed through NDOT. We do have to meet the match on that, which is 25%. That is in the near future, 27, 28, I believe. And then Mottsville Road is the next in line. Pineut Road reconstruction, there's a missing link there from where we did dump road to the newer section by the roundabout. Kimerling Road is fairly, is in need. We did just chip seal it to extend its life, but that's the last chip seal we're going to be doing on it. And then there'll be a mill and fill required on that one. And we have that one down twice.
Yeah, Kimerling's in such bad shape, we put it down twice just to make sure we didn't miss it. No, that's a typo, obviously, on my part.
And the other one we would group with Pineut Road is Toller. There's a missing link in Toller between Fish Springs Road and where we ended the reconstruction in 2014.
County Manager Davidson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager, for the record. So for those, I can't help myself. We're talking about roads. For those following along at home, let me recap for you. We have $1.2 million in road operating for road maintenance of valley projects. 1.4 approximately, I'm using round numbers. 1.4 for road operating, road maintenance at the lake, can't be used in the valley. Set aside road maintenance. Phil told you it takes about $50,000 to $60,000 per mile to maintain roads. It doesn't buy a lot of miles of road to maintain, especially when you think of the county's responsible for maintaining, I think it's a combination of, I want to say, around 400 miles of road. So we're not talking about buying a lot of maintenance for miles. Capital project funding, RTC funding, the big picture, we have $4.5 million total in road funding that we collect approximately every year in RTC. We have $1 million. Right off the top of that is a debt payment. That leaves us with $3.5 million available. And Mr. Erb, if you don't mind going back one slide, has shown you a project every year for the next, sorry, one slide for the capital improvement projects for the coming years, has shown you a picture of how we're going to spend that money, one road at a time, for the next five years. That doesn't begin to address a $50 million backlog in road maintenance. I am very excited, and I use that word loosely, chomping at the bit, to have this conversation with the county commission. This county has been kicking this can, this conversation, for 20-plus years now. We are looking forward to scheduling, we have scheduled, excuse me, a road workshop conversation on April 30th. We will be discussing this in greater detail. It'll be very engaging. Phil and I are going to co-seat color commentary in real time for you and tell you, now is the time. We have got to tackle this. This amount of money is not sustainable for the obligations, the current funding obligations that the county has for road maintenance, road repair, road reconstruction, and any kind of future transportation planning that the county has. With that, Madam Chair, I turn it back to the Commission.
Thank you. That was helpful. County Manager.
Yeah, John Erb, for the record. I'd like to add to that. When I first started in 2014, they were just finalizing the road task force, road funding task force. And I made it to their very last meeting. And we're going to present some of their alternatives to you in the next meeting. And they kicked the can down the road, jumped forward another year, and the board started to see the need. And we, at the time, we only had a nickel gas tax. And that board, they bit the bullet and they approved, well, we only had a four cent gas tax. They bit the bullet and they, as a board, not the voters, as a board, they approved the nickel gas tax addition to it. So now we're up to nine cents. From that, we bonded $12 million, and we got a lot of roads improved. I don't know if people remember how Buckeye was, or Jack's Valley was, or Centerville over here. But they were almost like driving on dirt roads. Buckeye was eight-to-12-inch cracks that were beating the drivers to death as they drove across it. But they made the step and things, we got things improved. And there wasn't a lot of public comment against it. I don't think people really noticed the increase. Gas prices changed all the time. Nobody really noticed the change with the nickel increase. But it did a lot of good in this county, and we need to move forward and do something similar in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for that. It's helpful. Are there questions?
Not really questions, but part of when I ran, this is one of my topics, and when they say kicking the can, my sport's basketball, so I don't know how to kick. So I'm going to work on, it's definitely a priority for me, and see if what we can do to at least get started in the progress of getting to an end. I know it's not a today solution, or a tomorrow solution, or a next-year solution. It's going to take time to recover. It's kind of like when you get overweight, over 30 years, you're not going to lose all that weight in a month. It takes another couple of years to get back. So just want to let you know that's where I personally, I don't want to speak for anybody else on the board, but in your corner to figure out a way to get you guys what you need to get our roads back up to where they should be.
Thank you.
Before you leave, I did want to make an observation. We have made some, we've installed some equipment on River View that has had significant impacts, I believe, on the safety aspects of River View between 395 and Dresslerville, I guess, there in front of the golf course. And I want to thank you for that. The speed indicators, the flashing lights. I have to admit that I probably haven't been through there without the flashing lights going off when I've been through there, but it does cause me to slow down. I come off of 395, turn left, and go up that road, and go down the hill, and immediately the flashers go off, reminding me I need to slow down, which is good. And then also coming the opposite direction. And now also, we've put in the push buttons to alert individuals, drivers that we have, pedestrians going through there. So I want to commend you and thank you for that application. It's really significant. Maybe Commissioner Turkinian wants to jump in here, too.
I just wanted to say, there, a guy named Gil Galvin, who was a little bit of a pain in the butt to you guys, but he was really on top of this issue from the beginning. He passed away. It's nice to see that some positive stuff came out of some of the things that he had suggested.
Good.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Erb. Can I ask about how long this next section may take? Should we take a quick?
We were scheduled for 3.3 hours, but if you need to.
I'll try to be back as fast as I can.
So it is 2:27. We'll shoot for five minutes, 2:32. Let's take our seats. All right, it is 2:32, and we will resume. I think we're at General Fund Public Works Building Services. Okay, Mr. Rittger and Mr. McDoanell.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Jeff McDoanell, Public Works, for the record. So this is going to be a general fund item for building services. And our mission statement is basically to provide efficient, high-quality maintenance of all of our Douglas County's facilities for the health, well-being, and convenience of citizens, visitors, and staff. Our department function, we maintain the building appearance, function, safety, and security. We want to keep all equipment running as effectively and efficiently as possible. We provide project management with outside contractors for any major facility repairs. for any major facility repairs. Our measures of workload and indicators. To date, we have closed out 1,560 Sherwell requests. We've addressed and closed all of those. We maintain approximately 350,000 square feet of building space. We service 22 locations between the valley and the lake. And as of this year, we recently took over the responsibilities of helping maintain Menon Town Airport. They have an administration building, maintenance hangar, P-51 court office space, seven county-owned hangars with, the seven buildings with 78 hangars amongst them. Our accomplishments so far this fiscal has been, we completed the modernization of the oldest two elevators within our facilities. We did it under budget. We've reduced outside contractor costs by completing more projects in-house. We've converted about 40% of our 22 buildings to LED lighting in order to conserve energy costs. Our goals for this upcoming year, we'd like to complete the remaining four elevators that we have within this fiscal year. We are working to complete the epoxy floor project in the jail. We would like to complete the JLEC roof replacement, which we actually have a project walk this afternoon. And we're going to continue to reduce outside costs through energy efficiency.
To reduce outside costs through what?
Energy efficiency.
Energy efficiency.
Energy efficiency and saving on contractor costs by doing stuff in-house.
I know Commissioner Tarkanian likes that because he likes in-house. Yeah, that's great.
We prefer it as well. There are just some things that are left out. Director Rittger is going to take over this organizational chart.
Oh, you want to? Okay. Phil Rittger, Director of Public Works for the record. So this is the org chart. You'll see this on both the fleet and the facility side. Jeff manages that. But specific to this presentation, we're looking at the right-hand side of this chart where reporting into, Jeff is the Senior Maintenance Specialist and then three Maintenance Specialists and one Maintenance Assistant. I will note that two of those positions were added within last fiscal year to support, specifically to support the airport. And maintenance at the airport, it's, as we added that to the workload for this department. We're a year into that at this point. And as a result of that, we're bringing forward.
I'm sorry, and I don't want to do, what did we call it? TOT? Be quick. Can you go back to that last one? So when we chose to have our county run the airport rather than contract, then we needed to maintain it? And that's why we added?
That's correct.
That's what I heard. Okay.
Right.
And how's that going?
Very well, actually. In this past, and I think we'll talk about it when we talk about the airport presentation about a week from today. But I can tell you now that there was a significant amount of backlog and deficiencies within the facilities at the airport. Jeff and his team were able to clean that up very effectively over the course of this past 12 months. One of the, we, John mentioned that we didn't have a lot of snow plowing this year. That actually was a benefit both to the roads and to the airport because the facility crew is actually responsible for cleaning the pavement and maintaining the runways during emergency situations or snow conditions like that. Airport staff is now trained and up and running on dealing with the day-to-day inspections. But again, if there's something significant that's found during an inspection, the facility staff are the ones who get called in to assist with that as well as the building. So they kind of float between both the pavement portions of the airport, the field and grass areas of the airport in terms of maintaining that, as well as the buildings themselves.
And the county as a whole recognizing some savings by doing it ourselves rather than contracting. But that's the subject of another presentation.
Yeah, I don't want to steal the airport manager's thunder. So yeah, we'll wait. As I was saying, after a year of managing the airport and in coordination with the airport manager, we are actually looking to, as a supplemental request here, which is on the personnel side, to do a slight reorganization for Public Works within Building Services. And that is to add a maintenance supervisor position and eliminate the senior maintenance specialist position and promote the current senior maintenance specialist into that supervisory role. It's full-time equivalent to neutral. And the fiscal impact of the department with the promotion is on the order of $11,000 annually. What this does for the organization, in Jeff's organization, is it provides him with some direct line supervision for the building maintenance staff. As he mentioned in the earlier slides, we're maintaining 350,000 square feet of building in 22 separate locations, inclusive now of the airport, which the airport is a very large location. So it really helps, it's going to help with efficiency and productivity to be able to have some direct line supervision for the staff to be able to report into. Jeff right now has all of the fleet service people reporting into him, plus all of the individual maintenance staff. So this will help with that reporting structure and management. That's shown here in this revised or proposed reorganization. So what we're doing is, as I said, we're adding a supervisor position, which is an exempt position, and eliminating the senior specialist position.
Is that, I'm looking at our supplemental request sheet on page three, and I see reduction of one maintenance specialist. But I don't see adding a maintenance operations supervisor?
So Phil Rittger, Director of Public Works for the record.
We found it. I found it. Yep, found it. Okay, got it. Thanks.
I'll turn it back over to Jeff at this point.
Jeff McDoanell, Fleet and Facilities Manager, Public Works for the record. Take these off. So our expenses, quite honestly, if you look at the bottom line here, I'll hit the highlights, but we're really looking at a 0% increase going forward into this next fiscal year. Utilities, you know, you can see that's one of our bigger expenses. And all utilities are paid ultimately through our department. So the big one that we're in control of is the line item 520-097, which is the building ground maintenance. We're going to keep that flat. That pretty much just takes care of the maintenance of the 22 facilities. That's going to stay right straight across the board. We also pay, another big one is the janitorial services across these. That is what their contract is currently right now. It's good for one more year, and we're going to start looking, you know, we'll shop and see if we want to keep it. We'll get competitive bids. We pay, you know, we pay into the motor pool expense as well. That's pretty much flat. It's going down just a little bit, mostly because as our vehicles have been replaced, the maintenance cost has gone a little bit lower. We have some newer vehicles right now. Another big one, institutional supplies. That is all of the stuff that the janitors are using. That's your paper products in your restrooms, your cleaning supplies and such. And then the building supplies, that is your incidentals, light switches, light fixtures, door handles, locks, building materials such as that. But basically, we're looking at staying flat for the year.
Mr. McDoanell, when I look at this, so going back up to building, maintenance, building grounds, from '24 to '25, our budget, we reduced that by $100,000. And so you're looking at maintaining that same level going forward in this year. So when we have a significant drop like that of $100,000, of basically $300,000, that's a 33% drop. We're not losing the maintenance of our buildings though in that process, and that's.
So what that was in that 2024 budget cycle, there was the records remodel at the sheriff's office. That budget, that amount of money actually got put into that line item. Working with our finance department, we're kind of straightening out a lot of those just for tracking. But that's where that reduction is.
And what about the new acquisition? Is, are your department going to be picking over the maintenance of the movie theater?
No, we are not. That is a community services. That's not been discussed with Public Works. So no.
And now you're on record.
Right? Now, with that being said, we are also gearing up and planning for, in, you know, within two years, we have the new justice center. That is something we will be picking up. As far as our capital requests, and this has already been, you guys approved this a couple of budget cycles previous. We're going to finish our modernization of all of the elevators. When you guys approved this, it was 525 per year for three years. We're in the last cycle of that, and we're going to finish everything up this year. Any questions on the general fund facilities?
I think we asked them along the way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You got to escape out of that.
Just got to stop sharing. No. So go back to the zoom. Now go to share. And then find that presentation. That's road. There you go. And now go back down to share. And then go to slideshow. Phil Rittger, Director of Public Works for the record. Just to go back to the Building Services. With regards to the theater, I wanted to just finish that conversation. I know we're on the record at this point for that. But if we, if this board so desired us to take maintenance of that. Butter and butter popcorn is really hard to keep clean out of the upholstery. So, you know, we'd probably recommend it with vinyl covers on all most seats. It's not going to be comfortable, but it's much easier to maintain.
That's it. You're not doing it because.
Okay, Jeff McDoanell again, Fleet and Facilities Manager, Public Works for the record. So this is our internal fund of fleet services. And our mission statement for fleet services to provide an unbending commitment of quality service to ensure that Douglas County vehicles and equipment are maintained for the health and safety of our county staff. Our department function, we maintain all of Douglas County fleet, including the sheriff's vehicles, heavy equipment, emergency equipment, generators. We prepare all of the Douglas County vehicles and equipment for duty. And we also manage fleet vehicle and equipment replacement. So you've probably heard some of this in your past presentations. You're going to hear more. This is an indicator of everything that we take care of. In the sheriff's department, they have 151 vehicles, nine motorcycles, seven UTVs, 33 trailers, three boats, two snow cats, and two snowmobiles. The motor pool department, which is within this presentation, we have 94 vehicles. The road department has seven vehicles, 12 trucks, 11 trailers, and 20 heavy equipment. Stormwater department, four trucks, three trailers, and two heavy equipment. DART has 10 buses and four vans. The airport has two vehicles, one trailer, one ATV, and four heavy equipment. Community Services has 54 vehicles, 24 trailers, and 15 UTVs. We provide service for all Douglas County departments, including the towns, China Spring, MGSD vehicles, and equipment. Our accomplishments have been, we provide service for the following. We have a total of 322 vehicles, 72 trailers, 48 heavy equipment, 26, I'm sorry, that was supposed to be mobile equipment, nine motorcycles, and three boats. We make sure of the preparation and get them all road-ready, all the new vehicles for all of the departments. We facilitate the purchase and replacement of vehicles and equipment when it comes time. We maintain all Douglas County vehicles' equipment at the highest safety standards. And our goals are quite simply just to continue providing safe, reliable, and efficient vehicles and equipment for our employees.
Madam Chair. County Manager.
Madam Chair, if I may, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager for the record. So I think this is a really important point for me to jump in and talk about just very briefly. When we started on day one with presentations, one of the topics that was bubbling up from comments from the public that I was receiving, I'm not sure if the commission is receiving them, is regarding, can't we just cut staff in the general fund to divert funding to other purposes? And I think this particular department is a really, really good example. Fleet, both fleet and facilities are really good examples of we are doing large amounts of work with very limited team members. We just talked about over 300 vehicles that fleet is responsible for servicing with 1, 2, 3, 4, 5? Five guys who do an amazing job. We are so lucky to have them, incredibly efficient, wonderful team we have in place. That is cost-effective fleet management at its finest. I really appreciate the team. Also, on the facility side, over 330,000 square feet managed by 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 guys. I don't know where I would cut team members out of the general fund. Thank you.
Jeff McDoanell, Fleet and Facilities Manager for the record. Thank you, County Manager, for that.
We have one more question.
I do have another question. So, you know, and I, yes, I am thoroughly impressed with the job you guys do. But I have to indicate that during a recent incident out at TRE, the officers were on site. And I happened to look at an officer's vehicle, and the tires were nearly bald. And so I instructed that officer, please get that into fleet maintenance ASAP. Now, what happens, because I know we're allowing our officers to take their vehicles home now, and I salute and endorse that process. But who actually makes that, you know, is there any? Do you have these vehicles on a regular schedule? What happens when you bring an officer's vehicle in for maintenance? What do they use? Is there, you know, what's the process there? And who makes those determinations?
Jeff McDoanell, Fleet and Facilities Manager for the record. So yes, they are, all drivers are required, we put a sticker in the window, just like you would see at any other service shop. They are fully inspected by our staff once they're brought in. That doesn't mean they're always brought in. There are the majority, almost every driver, whether it be the sheriff's department, whether it be any other department, are really good about keeping their stuff in. Sometimes people just miss it. They don't, for whatever reasons, life happens, they're not bringing them in on that exact schedule. not bringing them in on that exact schedule. As soon as, you know, and to Ms. Davidson's point, we have an amazing staff in our fleet department. We will have sheriff's deputies stop by without an appointment because they have an emergency, boom, we get them in. We make appointments for them, generally within a day or two of their request. Most times, it's around whatever their schedules are, their scheduled days off, they really like to try and do that, because, quite honestly, those vehicles are their offices, you know, so they're not, we want to work with whatever their schedule is. So, yeah, once they come to the shop, if it's a safety issue, it absolutely is addressed. However, we can't make them all bring them in immediately, you know, there is some driver responsibility.
Phil Riedker, Director of Public Works. We do have a program, or a system within the fleet, mainly strictly really within motor pool, and not 100% of motor pool, but with a large percentage of motor pool, which is a program called GeoTab. It's actually a module that gets plugged into the OSB reader. Basically, it's an add-on to the equipment, which monitors the vitals of the vehicles. So it actually, and reports back through a computer system to the fleet services office on vehicles that are registered in that program. It gives you GPS tracking location, but it monitors, you know, acceleration, fast acceleration speeds, et cetera, but it also monitors all the warning lights and check engine lights. It's not going to necessarily monitor tires themselves, but it will give us a good indication, gives the fleet services a pre-indication of vehicles that are obtaining high mileage and need to be brought in for service. At least on the motor pool vehicles, we have the ability to service more proactively. That's not available with the sheriff's department at this point.
Jeff McEnell, Fleet and Facilities Manager, for the record. Does that answer your questions? So, you know, and one of the things that I, this is kind of off our slide here, I've always been very proud of being a part of the team that keeps those officers in that department out there, keeping everybody safe. You know, we are the front line of getting them back out on the road and keeping them on the road. So that's something that myself and our team is very proud of.
I have a quick question before you go off this slide. I just double-checked the job openings, and these guys aren't on there, so are you guys filling these now? Are they, are we into that, where you guys are a little close to filling them?
Yes, we've actually, the job just closed on Friday for the fleet services master technician. So I'm working with the recruiters in HR, and we're going to set up interviews. We got eight good applicants for that position. We're looking at four of them I really like, and we're going to set up interviews for that. So, yes. So the revenues for fleet services, you know, the motor pool fees coming from other departments, The repair charges, well, year-to-date, we have billed out $804,000, we're budgeted at 1.3, almost 1.4, which is pretty straight with last year. And that can fluctuate, you know, depends on the needs, the repairs, the breakdowns. Other revenues, you know, when we, as we cycle out our vehicles for motor pool, and I will help facilitate with other departments, but this is for motor pool itself, we try to find the balance of when the maintenance cost is getting too high, and when we can still get a fair, good value, we take everything to auction, is what we do with them. And so we've got, we're looking at a tentative of $40,000, because we have some coming up right now, we've probably got about four that we're getting scheduled for auction here soon, as they're cycling out, we're receiving our new vehicles. Our expenses, well, for motor pool, I have to remember that I have two budgets here, I have the fleet services maintenance, and I have motor pool, with two different funds. So in motor pool, the 821, we pay into the shop, the county shop, thus far, we've done 104, almost $105,000 worth of repairs, maintenance, which includes tires, oil changes, tires, fuel, everything to keep that car running. Another big expense, gas and oil. So there's 94 vehicles that we take care of in motor pool. $127,000 worth of fuel that we run through all of the motor pool vehicles. Keep in mind, that does not include other departments, that is strictly the 94 that are within the motor pool.
Phil Riedker, Director of Public Works. What's unique in a fund like this, and I want to point out, is the depreciation. You won't normally see that in any other budget presentation, you'll see that here, and you'll see it on the enterprise funds. Depreciation is the allocation of funds essentially that go to vehicle replacements. So that's the reason it's really in here, it's, you know, and on a balance sheet, it becomes a neutral event, but I think from the standpoint of just looking at it from a budgetary standpoint, understand that we are setting aside reserves on an annual basis for motor, for vehicle replacements.
So in vehicle maintenance, in the shop, you've heard it across a couple of other presentations, you know, utilities is going up, but, you know, we're basically, $1,900, we're projecting more for this year. Motor pool expenses, again, so the maintenance shop has one motor pool vehicle. The leasing, I'm sorry, that was in another, that was, I got mixed up there, I apologize. That one's at a zero. You know, our operating supplies is a big one, our cost services allocation, or cost Tires, tires is a big one that, here, as you can tell, I was trying to bounce around that one. So tires, we're actually going to go, we're asking for, I did a study, an increase of $15,000 from years past. And I know that this is the elephant in the room, the touchy subject, but basically, the entire county across the board has done, in the last five years, has netted a positive 32 vehicles. There's been 114 new vehicles purchased in the last five years, and only 82 of them have been either sold through auction or disposed of. So that's a 32-plus. In the last five years, the cost of tires has had an 8% increase. So basically, what I'm looking at, to increase by $15,000, that would, on an average vehicle, either a pickup or a sports utility vehicle, a lot of what's in there, that would fund 15, or that would put new tires on 15 of those vehicles, and we have a net of 32. We can do it with that much, it's just, it's been ignored for several years for obvious reasons, you know, nobody wants to touch the, you know, the tire expense. I can tell you, we've been very efficient at it, but this is something that we're going to need to do.
As long as you're there, let's, you know, I'll make this observation, obviously, everything is going up in cost, okay, and tires included. And what I've also noticed is that anybody that's bought a new car, you know, I bought my wife a new car a year, a year and a half ago, maybe, now, and it's like they're putting training wheels or starter tires on these new cars, okay? And they're not designed, you know, I mean, normally, when you go to, to go to replace a car, you're looking at the difference between 50,000 mile warranty, or 75,000, or 60, okay, and hoping the tires will last that long. And I swear to God, you know, we were like 20,000 miles onto those tires, and they were not good, and we had to replace them. And I would assume that we're probably, you know, in the SUVs we're buying for the motor pool, in a lot of those cases, when we buy those new, we're getting those starter tires that the manufacturers are putting on to try to keep the cost, their overall cost down, you know, and then, of course, you know, then the driver, the new owner is responsible for replacing those tires. That's just an observation, and I, so that's why I don't really see a $15,000 increase as a, and once again, I want to make sure that our officers are driving on safe tires, and I hope they're getting the best tires for them, because that's the most critical to me. Not that our other employees aren't critical, I don't, I probably stepped into that a little bit, but, you know, yes, we don't want any of our employees driving our vehicles to be unsafe, period, but tires that appropriately fit our vehicles also.
You are absolutely right, Commissioner. You are doing well if you can get 15,000 to 20,000 miles out of a factory set of tires. That's, it's unfortunate, but that is the truth. And you are 100% right. We put nothing but the best on all of the vehicles, especially the sheriff's department, you know, they're definitely speed-rated, you know, we're, safety is number one for anything that comes out of the maintenance shop.
And I'm just curiosity question, do we have enough buying power? Are we wholesale, or are we having to go through a retailer?
No, we have actually two vendors currently, right now, that are under state contract, the Sourcewell program, so we do get very good buying power, yes.
County Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager. I can never miss a learning opportunity, because March is Ethics Awareness Month, and we've been talking a lot about fraud, waste, and abuse training. Something for the commissioners to keep in mind, if you don't mind going back to that last slide that showed the tire budget, remember when we had the issue, it was, there were three line items in this particular budget that were of issue, if I remember correctly. I think there was a fluid or gas, or oil and fluids line item that was exceeding, a parts and a tires line item. And they were exceeding the budget by about 20% every year, and how they were getting past the goalie, so to speak, is the money was being augmented into their budget every year to cover the overage. It wasn't actually something that the commission was looking at in time for budget. So a good budget best practice is, you should be paying attention, also commissioners, to the actual column, 2025 actuals, and make sure that that's tracking with the adopted budget, and look for trends there. We train all of our department heads and our supervisors and managers on looking on this, and we actually use, I hate to say it, Tiregate as the example, and we show them a five-year trend worksheet, and everyone is trained on how to run these budget performance reports and to identify these types of overages. So these are definitely the most watched line items in all of Douglas County, and very much a learning episode. I don't mean to make light of it, we take these matters seriously. Thank you.
Jeff McEnell, Fleet and Facilities Manager, for the record. I can tell you, there is nobody on my staff that was here during that, but everybody is very sensitive to it, as you all know. It's a known thing, very sensitive to it, very aware of it, and we're, we are very fiscally sound, I believe, in what we're doing, so.
Phil Riedker, Director of Public Works. I'm going to direct this to Kathy Lewis, since she's in the room. I have petitioned finance for the last couple of years to change line item 532004 from tires to elephant, or dumbo, or something, but to no avail, sorry.
And so our last one here, and this was brought up earlier in the slide, there is a, when people are paying into the motor pool cost allocation fund, there is money going into the replacement of those vehicles. And currently, right now, I can tell you that there are some on order, so we have not, for this current fiscal year, we have not finished paying for them, but what is set for the next fiscal year, $405,000, which has been allocated by the cost allocation of the motor pool fund. Any other questions?
I would suppose vehicle acquisition has become a lot easier since, I think, we were having difficulty a couple of years ago in getting vehicles, but at least now it seems to have...
Yeah, I have several vendors, it's really quite easy. I kind of joke, you know, if, it'd sure be nice if buying your personal vehicle was as easy as what I can do right now, because we put in an order, we know what it is, you send it to them, they call you when it's done. Very simple.
Thank you for the presentation and for your excellent work. Are there any final questions? All right. Thank you, both of you. Ms. Lewis.
Thank you, Kathy Lewis, for the record. I don't have many comments, we're at the end of day two, we'll start again next Monday, except I'll cough every time I come here. The only comment I have is County Manager Jennifer Davidson mentioned April 30th is a roads workshop. I do want to make it clear, I think at this time, we're looking at two special meetings on that day, so the public knows when to come. The morning will be a budget update, and then the afternoon will be a special meeting on the roads. So we'll separate the two, so then the public can choose to go to both, or to go to the roads, or whichever one they want.
Is that in this room?
Yes.
Thank you. I would, so we will reconvene our budget meetings on Monday at 10:00 AM.
Oh. We have budget hearings Monday and Tuesday next week, but we'll start again Monday at 10:00.
Thank you. Good. I wanted to note that Commissioner Tarkanian has an important family event elsewhere next week, so we unfortunately won't have him with us, but it's hard to schedule these when everyone can be here, and we appreciate you, Commissioner Tarkanian, accommodating the schedule for everyone else. All right, is there any public comment on this agenda item? Mr. McCallum.
Just getting back to our roads, there's, I think, something to remember when we talk about how they're funded. We have towns and GIDs that pay extra taxes, and pay for their roads, and we have areas of the county that do not. And somehow, in order to fix our roads, we're going to have to find a way to equal that out, I think. I think that's definitely something we have to look at towards the revenue. We used to worry about Tiregate, now it's Roadgate. So, not that that's funny, but I just think that's one area to look at as we talk about financing roads. Thank you.
And would you state your name, for the record? Did you?
James McCallum.
Thank you. I know, but still. All right, is there any further public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, I will close public comment on that agenda item and open public comment on general matters. I see none, I will close public comment and adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.